Just one more minute to see if Commissioner Peng shows up and then we'll call to order. Ah, there we are.
Glad you could make it. Glad you could make it.
So, yeah. You're on the cusp, yeah.
All right, since everyone is here who's expected to be here, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Staff, you want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Burns?
Here.
Commissioner Chomsky?
Here.
Commissioner Javendahl?
Commissioner McCroskey?
Here.
Mr. Peng?
Yeah.
And Chair McLean-Lanahan, excuse me.
Here. All right. Land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Leishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. Okay. Now, does anyone have a public comment for something that is not on the agenda?
Anyone on Zoom has a public comment for the commission, please use the raise your hand function? I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, let's go on to the monthly presentation of data.
Okay. City of Albany Police Reports, we've got reporting for both September and October in here. In terms of pedestrian involved crashes, there were, there was one in September and three in October. In terms of bicycle collisions, bicycle involved collisions, there was one in September and one in October. Total collisions, there were thirteen in September and fourteen in October. Moving citations, there were seventy-four in September and forty in October. And DUI arrests, there was one in both September and October.
Any questions? Other comment?
We do have one hand raised. Julie Wieglestein, please go ahead.
Hi, I just came into the meeting, but can somebody define a moving violation for me? Thank you.
Staff could respond to that? I'm not sure what size definition is.
A little bit out of our expertise, and we're not in the law enforcement realm, but I presume it has to do with vehicle code compliance.
It's as opposed to a parking violation.
Right, okay.
Something where the police get involved.
So it could be anything, I guess.
I have a comment.
So a violation is an instance where police write a ticket to a motorist making some kind of illegal movement with their vehicle, whether it's not stopping at a stop sign, not yielding to a pedestrian, that would be an example, but colloquially it's what you'd call getting a ticket.
I actually don't know if it can also be a warning, but yes, it's, it is.
I think historically this has referred to the citations being issued and warnings are not tracked for these purposes.
Thank you.
If we're done with the public comment, yeah. Could we go back to the pedestrian collisions or the first graph?
We can. Give me one second.
Sure. I just note that sort of taking out the three or four years of, three years or so of COVID, we seem to be returning to a wintertime higher level of collision, which, you know, goes back to the lighting that we've looked at and that kind of thing, I would assume, but you'd have to track that a little more accurately, but I think I'd be comfortable making that assumption. Obviously, it happened during COVID as well, but I think there's a little more mushiness in the data there. Anyway, just thought I'd share that observation or trend that I see.
Share. Personally, I can tell you at this time of year, when it's getting dark so much earlier, maybe just because I'm older, but it takes me a while to adjust to the darkness. It seems really dark out there and a handful of times, thankfully, there was no collisions, but people in dark colored clothing are in crosswalks beginning to realize, I can't see them. I don't know if that's just me, but so I think a lot of this issue with increases in the wintertime is due to darkness. Can't point it out, but we can fix that, right? With lighting, that's the whole idea of our street lighting.
Mitigate.
I asked for, I asked for an update at our last agenda setting meeting for, early in the coming year on the light, progress of the lighting stuff that we've talked about. So hopefully we'll get some more information on that soon. Okay, if there are no more comments, we can move on to the shared mobility data.
So as the commissioners should know by now, GIG Car Share is ending its operations as of December 27th. It's actually functionally over right now. So we don't have any data from them. And VEAL is, we're awaiting clarification on data received before we're ready to present on it. So we'll have more of an update for you next month.
All right. Think there's anything to comment on there? So let's move forward to the calendar. Approval of the minutes? Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes from last month?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Commissioner Barnes?
Aye.
Commissioner Chomsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Javendahl?
Aye.
Commissioner McCroskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Peng?
Yes.
Chair Vehil McLanahan?
Yes.
Nits are approved.
All right. Let's move on to item 5-1.
I'm going to relinquish my seat here to Public Works staff. We have James Sorelli and Allison Correa sitting on this item.
Okay, good evening. As Ben said, I'm James Sorelli, Associate Engineer with the Public Works Department. I'm here with Allison Correa, our CIP Program Manager, and online we have Mashenthal. She is with Sanbell, who is our consultant performing the plan set design update. And we are here to talk about the Marin Avenue Pavement and Curb Rehabilitation Project for Phase Two, an update since we last came to Commission 2022. This will be the 2024 update.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to be back here with this project. Just from some background, let's get to the next slide. This project was initially a project spanning from Cornell Avenue to the city limits with Berkeley. This was in 2021 when we started initial designs. We finished Phase One of the project from Cornell to Key Route. The second phase of the project was originally delayed due to East Bay Mud coordination. They realized they wanted to put in an updated water line prior to us paving the project. Subsequently, we had a significant amount of paving work and project work happening both citywide and on arterials. And due to that kind of higher than normal amount of impacts to the community, this project was not appropriate to kick off at the time. We really did not want San Pablo Avenue to be impacted at the same time as Marin Avenue. During this time, we finished up the street lighting assessment and had some recommendations from our street lighting consultant, including prioritizing intersection safety lighting along Marin Avenue. This updated project set that you are going to see tonight incorporates those, those recommendations, along with some other updates which we'll go into shortly, next side piece. These include identifying traffic signal improvements are necessary at Peralta Avenue. Peralta Avenue is now one of the oldest traffic signals in the City of Albany and our crews take, spend a significant amount of time during power outages, running over there, putting out stop signs. Part of the improvements that we're doing on Peralta Avenue will include, I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but it'll include battery backup so that we better handle these kind of outages. We'll talk about intersection safety lighting to this project, minor traffic striping revisions, push buttons upgrades, some of these other kind of traffic signal related improvements, along with the revised grading, which have a variety of reasons which we'll get into. Regarding the Peralta traffic signal improvements, there's a list of many different reasons we've proposed to include this signal improvement. Apparently, some of the signal heads are, and pedestrian heads are located behind some of the large trees, which cause some visibility issues. Signal controller, as I mentioned, is one of the oldest in Albany at this time. We have lots of power outages. We're upgrading our video detection equipment. This is in order to remove the loops, the traffic circle loops, which are often cut through or damaged and require bringing out special equipment. Video detection allows us to have, have that separated from kind of the roadway prism. GPS preemption, this is for fire and emergency services, along with construction of new conduit system to meet current code requirements. Existing signal conduit system is six to 10 inches deep. So this is very shallow and we found that pretty much any utility contractor going through there accidentally encounters it even with warnings. So we're going to try to lower that or protect it if that's not possible due to subgrade conditions.
I'm going to try and briefly switch it over to our PowerPoint presentation instead of the PDF. Our internet is incredibly slow today, so it took a while to download. Okay, thank you for bearing with us. So as you know, and as Allison described, we completed the citywide street lighting evaluation earlier this year. It identified conflicts at, around the city, but in particular for this project, it identified conflicts at the Marin Avenue intersections, as well as between our existing utility pole mounted streetlights and the large tree canopies that we have along Marin Avenue. So for Phase Two, you know, we're modifying the curb line, we're changing where people are crossing, we're putting new crosswalks in, modifying these crossing locations. It kind of increased the need to also reevaluate lighting at intersections. Even if the lighting before was sufficient, now that we have changed geometry of the street, we needed to make sure that people are safely crossing at night. So for this particular project, we are looking at intersection lighting improvements only at the intersection. There is a long-term need, as identified in the evaluation, for the corridor, you know, particularly mid-block lighting. The inclusion of just intersection lighting increased the project budget alone by about 10%. That's a half a million dollars. So we won't be doing mid-block here, but we will be programming capacity, electrical capacity. So in the future, it has the power to tie in a mid-block system. We made some very minor revisions to traffic striping and traffic marking. These include greenback striping at the bike lane at the departure for increased bicycle visibility. We kept, you know, the two-foot, four-foot, two-foot recommendation and we kind of went up a bit closer with MUTC guidance to include the Chevron marking on the exterior buffer. And we added greenback bicycles, bicycle boxes along Santa Fe and Peralta. This was brought up in the 2022 discussion when we brought these plans. It wasn't a formal recommendation, but informally it was asked to staff to kind of look at this and, you know, we can, if there's questions, Emma can talk a bit more in detail, but ultimately it was looked at and we've placed them in the project. Since this project is now not only putting the Ventura RFB per the 2022 recommendation, we're also doing the Peralta signal as Allison mentioned. We figured it'd just be prudent now to upgrade the other signals along the corridor to make sure that their button, their pedestrian push buttons were up to current code ADA proag requirements. We're just being a little proactive at those intersections. This wasn't required since we're not doing signal upgrades, but we figured we're out here, we're doing these audible vibro-tactile upgrades, let's just do it along the whole corridor. And really, the largest civil engineering change was related to the grading. Allison can get into a bit more detail about this as well as Emma, but as described, you know, we're looking to raise concrete corners rather than excessively lowering the street. The original plan was to do a lot of road and asphalt lowering, but in the Phase One constructions, we hit a lot of subgrade issues. And similarly, when EB Mud was replacing the water main along this current Phase Two extent, they came across a lot of subgrade issues. And at this particular intersection at Peralta, PGA was out there and we discovered we have very shallow bedrock. So, and to kind of visualize it, you know, it's a house on the right, built pretty low to the ground. House on the left, there's a lot of raised landscaping and our, you know, initial thoughts are because the ground is rock and it's going to be very difficult to dig down. Ultimately, what we've kind of staffed determined lowering intersections as originally planned is not only going to be very expensive, it's going to be just very difficult to actually construct.
So just to add a little bit more about this bedrock, it's probably related to why our signal system is so low, so shallow at this intersection. So we are raising grades. It'll provide a little bit more cover over our electrical conduits. Additionally, some of that protection will likely come with better utility protection. Additionally, some of that protection will likely come with better utility protection if we aren't able to reach the kind of code-compliant or code-consistent depths. The bedrock here, actually, this extends across the intersection. So it's not just where you see the visibly high property over there on the left, but even on the right-hand side, PG&E, when they put in their poles, they were reaching bedrock within about a foot or so. So very, very shallow. Additionally, talking about other subgrade issues, Marin Avenue has been around since the turn of the century, and a portion of it was based on old photos and maps, built right in kind of the creek channel for a good portion of it. That means that we're essentially working in mud. We were finding that we had a lot of problems with lowering and rebuilding an entire street up at intersections. Using asphalt to bridge, mud is not pleasant. And we had a full closure during Phase One, weekend closure. So that caused quite a bit of concern. Moving up towards this area, we're going to continue being in that kind of mud, and we just want to make sure that we can keep this road open as much as possible during construction. So we're looking at methods of construction, too, that allow us to kind of minimize the amount of trucks rolling over it during construction, because the more trucks roll over mud, the more it kind of churns it up. It makes it harder to put back.
So what does that mean from a transportation perspective? Ultimately, the, you know, the curb lines and geometry of the street weren't really changed from a pedestrian and traffic perspective. The main thing to think about is, you know, if we're lowering the street, it gives us a lot of flexibility with sidewalk grades and ramp grades and how it connects to the street. Now that we have to meet the existing street at where it is, basically, we lose a lot of that flexibility. And, you know, on the bottom here is a kind of a comparison at Southwest Pomona and Marin. This is just one general example. It kind of speaks for how most of these will look. You know, we had those two Case A-style ramps, but because of some of the technical difficulty in getting these grades, especially with the flares, you know, the wings of a curb ramp, we couldn't work with those Case As, and we went to using Case Fs with a very large wedge. These are not those tiny come-out-of-sneak-up-on-you wedges. These are very large. And where conditions permitted, we went to a Case G. That's where there's one flare, kind of with a dash line showed at those ramps. And we did follow the methodology in our draft curb ramp guidelines, what we kind of spoke to you guys about in September. You know, we're still keeping the wide five-foot ramp style. You know, traditionally, curb ramps are four-foot wide. We're still keeping the five-foot width. We're keeping the directionality, but just the style is changing. If you have questions about, you know, or to better understand some of those technical difficulties, Emma's here to talk now or at the end of this presentation. But if there's no questions on this right now, I'm going to kind of just move on and show generally what these changes look like on the plans. Okay, so I've kind of just highlighted where we're seeing these changes that we talked about. Most of these slides are pretty similar, so I'll spend a little bit more time on this one. But when, you know, when we're talking about those traffic striping, we're looking at the departures, this kind of style here. They're now greenbacked. And, you know, the addition of these Chevron buffers along the outer edge of the bike lane. So that's generally most of the striping changes. We, you know, this is kind of now the curb ramp configuration. It's pretty typical for all-around. It's these two Case Fs, two Case Fs with a wedge instead of the two Case As. And I think really the main thing to be looking to, that really has changed, is addition of streetlights. Pretty much every page in the plans, you'll see new streetlights. And we're also, in addition to these new streetlights, we're going to make sure that all the luminaires, you know, the lights on the existing poles are also replaced with the same specifications. So we have uniform color and uniform illumination.
James?
Yes.
Are those, what height are those new lights going to be at, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. There is, so these will be standard Cobra heads, kind of more or less. I mean, the best example would be Solano on the Hill, like those kind of style Cobra heads, or maybe what you see on San Pablo. Emma may have the exact height, but it's probably a similar Caltrans standard that you kind of see on San Pablo. We are, and I'll show it, we are going to be installing some pedestrian ones where I believe they're around like eight feet height, seven feet height, so they're below the tree canopy. And the lighting schematic that we're using was actually done by Clayton, who also did the street lighting guidelines. So they're pretty tuned in with, they've walked this street extensively and are pretty tuned in with what was needed. And Sandbell's subconsultant is kind of taking their schematic and bringing it into the final engineering. So even though these are the locations shown, they may be slightly changed. I know that was more than you asked for, but...
No, that's great. Thank you.
So similar, same striping changes, same ramp changes. Erase my annotations. This is actually, you know, this, here are some examples of where we'll be putting in those pedestrian-style post-stops. Again, I think they're around eight feet height. Don't quote me on that, but yes, they're much lower. They're more of the style you see on Masonic, that kind of height. Here's Santa Fe. This is kind of where we're seeing those greenbacked bicycle boxes now that we have at the signalized intersection along there. Because this is a school intersection, there is actually additional lighting that is added. So not, you know, already out there, we have Cobra head style across the intersection, but now we are also installing additional pedestrian lighting at each approach. And of course, we'll be replacing the existing Cobra heads so that, again, there's uniform color temperature.
The red lines imply geometry changes to the...
The red line's just a red curb.
Okay. No, I mean, like, is the curb changing there or is it the existing same?
Oh, so, no, this is existing. Santa Fe and Curtis, we are not adjusting any of the curb geometry, intersection geometry. Those are already bulbed out previously for a school safety project. Curtis and Nielsen, again, I can circle each light if you want, but I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, we'll have additional lighting at these intersections and improved replacements at the existing utility pole-mounted signals. And again, this is Curtis. On the west side here is where there's existing bulbouts and no geometry will be done. One thing I didn't specify, since it was already recommended in the 2022, is you are seeing those painted bulbouts at these intersections. Let me, these are already included per the 2020-22 recommendation, but I don't believe you've seen them past the general schematic, but, you know, these are kind of what they look like.
So these are also consistent with Phase One. So Phase One, we provided a Phase One design for recommendation, or was recommended by commission. Then subsequent to that, we talked about these painted bulbouts and those. So they did not make into the plans that was presented at the time, but subsequently included based on recommendations from the council, the commission. Additionally, just to give a little bit more information about these painted bulbouts, the reason that we ended up with painted bulbouts, we have a couple different things occurring. This project from Phase One and Phase Two had fairly significant corner radii reduction. I know not everybody was here two years ago. So corner radii reduction is when we kind of made very wide sweeping turns. And in order to both get the directional curb ramps that we wanted, along with kind of some beneficial traffic calming, we kind of squared up the corners a little bit more. Fortunately, this drawing doesn't really show that very well, but there was some... The bulbouts then, or the painted bulbouts, were then recommended as an alternative to doing additional concrete bulbouts. This was related to kind of preserving street width for a potential future bikeway.
So going on, again, similar changes, new lights. Curb ramp layout kind of as shown previously, striping updates. Same thing at roadway. And Ventura. What's not shown here is the RFB. It is in the plans. I just did not mark it up here for you for showing, because again, similarly as to these painted bulbouts, this was already a 2022 recommendation. It's in the plans. It's not a change. It's already been recommended. It's just for ease of drawing and ease of looking at this, it's not shown. It may just slightly affect the Cobra head placements, because they may actually be on the same pole as the RFB, depending where it's placed.
Just a question about the painted bulbouts where there aren't crosswalks, like on the southeast corner and the northwest along Marin. It looks like there, yeah, on the upper left there, the painted bulbout is not as long as the red curb. So could you describe the function expected from those?
So this is, these painted bulbouts in particular are actually ones we're looking at. We are submitting our comments back to the designer tomorrow to look at whether there is a need for bulbouts at these particular ones if the red curb's there, because there may not be any visibility advantages, or there may be. That's why we're going to have them just look at it to confirm that these are useful painted bulbouts. The red curb, you know, Emma can talk more into that, but it's most likely for sightlines. So that red curb is needed strictly for sightlines, not necessarily for the same reasons that the bulbout exists.
Yep, yep, that's correct, James. The red curb is based off of sightlines.
And also, the bulbout is shorter because that's already a kind of a sharp angle. The kind of function of lowering the speed is already there. You don't actually spend that much to extend that, is my understanding.
Do these have any, these painted bulbouts have any like the stick blockers or bumps or anything?
These will have the K71s on the approach, those bulky white ones.
Okay. Thanks.
And that's really it. You know, we have our, we recommend, our staff is recommending, the Transportation Commission recommends. City Council approves plans for this project, including the addition of traffic signal improvements, safety lighting, and the striping revisions. So I will open up to questions, and Emma is here online to answer any more technical, you know, more technical-related questions.
I have some kind of generic questions. I have heard that there are some issues, these would be road crowns and cycle paths on Marin. So if you're talking about raising or lowering pavement, how does that affect the road crown? And are there issues with safety standards or runoff? If you are modifying the crown, if you do, at all?
I'll take a first crack at this and then maybe turn it over to Emma. I guess the first thing is, we're not changing the crown. The crown will stay consistent. One thing that was identified during initial kind of conceptual designs is that the existing road has a quarter crown. This is where there's a top crown, and then there's kind of a second crown where the grades change. Currently, the bikeway is on, kind of mostly on that first part, the higher part, shallower part of that crown. Thank you, James. And...
Beautiful, beautiful.
So we're within that center two sections and not that kind of steeper sections. That's where the parking is currently set up. So we're not making any changes to that either. The, as you get upwards a little bit more into that parking lane, it increases to seven, eight, nine percent. Emma, if you have better numbers than that?
Nope, that's, those were the numbers I was thinking, around nine at the max.
Yeah. And a typical street section is five percent. We're talking about the difference between a very fat curb ramp and just slightly more than a very flat, than a standard curb ramp in terms of the difference. So while it is not to kind of highway codes, like Caltrans would not allow this to ever be constructed. This is an existing roadway that we're talking about, and for the most part, we're talking about cars. As we transitioned into intersections, what's going on is where the kind of steeper grades are. What James was talking about raising sidewalks, we are trying to kind of raise the area. Installed a, you know, a good portion of storm drain on this project in order to allow us to better control water, so we can kind of flatten that area out as well. So there will be some minor fluctuations with the bikeway at the very, very edge potentially, where we kind of flatten out and then have a slightly more tapered transition. But it's not something that we're talking about major slope changes.
Okay. Anybody want to jump in, stop me, but I'll keep going. Recently, there was a change in state laws that allowed cities to reduce speed limits below 25 miles an hour at their discretion. And there's one citizen in town, who I'm sure you all know well, who argued with us a lot about putting 15 mile an hour speed limits near schools, which I think we are allowed to do now at our discretion. So how does that, has that influenced these designs at all? The fact that, for example, I think near Marin School, if you head south on Santa Fe, there could be lower speed limits now. There's lower speed limits on Solano. That's, again, that's a general question. Is this at play in your decisions?
So the main purpose of this project was actually to pave the roadway. We've since triggered a lot of improvements. The traffic study to determine how we reduce speeds was not included as part of this scope. Emma or maybe even Jeffy might have some more information about kind of the schools and speed limits around them. Apologize.
Yeah.
Put me on the spot.
Justin is more familiar with the recent changes than I am. But yes, we're not, this is more of an engineering project than a vehicle management project as it stands right now. We could change the speed limit following whatever the procedures are in the vehicle code at our discretion, I think. We don't have to make a decision now in order to one way or the other.
Okay, another question.
Can I, can I add to that? One of the opportunities that this project will provide is updated controllers at the intersections will mean that you will be able to do more coordination or non-coordination between the signals with the goal of achieving a target speed. Or you could, it's not part of this project, obviously. So that's a great potential tool for the future?
Also, just to add to that, I think the opportunity is, so also, can we kind of restripe the road? Because if the speed limit is lower to 15, we don't need 12 feet wide. We can do 10 feet wide for length. That would be awesome.
So our lanes are actually 10 feet wide right now. In order to increase the buffer around the bikeway, we reduced lanes to 10 feet.
So that's already there. Awesome.
Thanks.
Okay. Next question, you refer a lot to painted bulbouts. Is there such a thing as an unpainted bulbout?
I think that's more of a colloquial description of paint that flex a bulbout. If it's unpainted and a bulbout, it would generally be concrete. It would be a hardscaped or asphalt or some
Painted bulbout means you're not putting a concrete bulbout there.
Right.
It's just paint.
It's just paint.
Well, I asked earlier and he said, and posts.
Right, paint and posts, but no, it's not a physically raised bulbout like the kind we're accustomed to, is that right?
That's correct. And that was related to the desire to, in the future, explore having protected bike lanes along Marin Avenue.
And this leads to my last question. I ride my bike a lot around all over the Bay Area, so I cannot remember where this is a problem, but that I have occasionally come across situations where bulbouts conflict with bikes. Such a way that you either have to swerve into traffic or if you're not paying attention, you have to bunny hop and go over the top. Sometimes some of us don't always pay attention. So how is this conflict? It looks like you've managed to work that out according to the diagrams on Marin, but you talked about that a little bit?
Sure, sometimes in this project, it's not something that we're seeing as an issue. But occasionally when we have larger bulbouts, you can, you need to coordinate that. In this case, our, I guess, corner radii increases, which it's, it is a sidewalk widening and bulbouts are a style of sidewalk widening. Whenever we do that, you really do need to make sure that you have sufficient clearance to your facilities. We, if we were to put in bulbouts in Marin on some future time, we would likely not push them out to the point where they're interfering with bicycle lanes.
And just to add to that, Allison, I think because we have the parking strip and the buffer, so that gives us nine feet from the edge of the bike lane to the face of curb. So that gives us the room to have the bike lane and have bulbouts without a conflict. But I've seen that too where, yeah, the bike lane just kind of runs into the sidewalk and bicyclists have to make some scary decisions. So we definitely try to avoid that.
Least they could do is give us ramps.
Exactly. More like a class four, right? A raised ramp onto the sidewalk would be the best case scenario, right?
Are there any other questions?
So you talked a little bit about the changes in curb ramps and with, is there, you mentioned, I think that the standard width of a curb ramp is four feet and you've tried to set them to five feet. Is there a reason it can't be the full six feet width that the sidewalk is in cases where the sidewalk is six feet?
The wire you make it, just the more challenging is to meet all these compliant grades. Traditionally, four feet is the ramp width and, you know, per our guidelines, we do five feet where it fits. But once you get to six feet, you know, you start, you start having issues with drainage, gutter grades, it becomes very flat. You need to really design, it becomes just difficult to design, especially on a hilly area like Marin. So we, you know, five feet's wide enough that, you know, typically two people can be walking together, so it's a nice middle ground between technically feasible and still, and more comfortable than the minimum requirement.
Okay. So where the new state law that's going fully into effect next month dictates a certain portion of the curb is not available for parking, will all of that be striped or painted bulbout in, at every intersection in this design?
Yes, so it's, for this, it's actually, it is based, the way the laws are, it's actually based off the edge of the crosswalk if it's marked. For this one, they're all marked. And yeah, we're consistently making sure it's 20 feet on approach per AB 413.
Okay.
Just to add in a little bit more, we're also implementing city policy, which includes the departures. So you see, some of them are engineered to be longer due to site distance, but in general, we're still also following city policy, which includes departures.
And does that apply on the north-south streets as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that's it for my questions. Thanks.
Any more questions from the commission? Okay, is there anyone in person who has any question, public comment about this item? Tell them three minutes. All right, you have three minutes.
Any revisions are happening to this area of the street are going to take that into consideration so that we can sort of have like a unified holistic approach so that we don't do just the paving and then six months later try to figure out how to traffic calm it. I would also suggest, I didn't see Peralta on the list here when we were going through the streets, but I'm hoping that that street, which, you know, Peralta's a 15 mile an hour at that point, there's a blind curve. I hope there's a world where those bulbouts could be actual real bulbouts and not just ballards or, you know, like plastic thingamabobbers. Because right now, you guys know it's a real shallow curve and going 15 miles an hour, you know, everybody comes up that curve at 30 miles an hour. It's very dangerous. 90% of the traffic on the street speeds according to the last traffic study. I also saw the thing about raising the concrete versus lowering the ground, maybe that's an opportunity to, you know, because of the grade right now, you guys were saying we couldn't easily do speed bumps, but maybe if the grade changes, that changes the calculus for speed bumps. So anyway, I just want to, I'm hoping that if there's a world where these can all be combined together, that we have the traffic calming and the repaving and the bulbouts and all that stuff happening together. Thanks.
I think we found out this evening that you may be the first street in Albany that has a bedrock speed bump.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person? Anyone online?
We do have one hand, several hands raised. Julie Winklestein, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks for all this information. I have, just have a few questions. My first one is the signals, the push button updates. You said it was going to be ADA compliance and you used term vibro tactile and I assume that means you can wave your hand in front of it. I assume that's what that means. But I'm wondering if there's, if these lights will be automatically go to pedestrian or if you actually have to be there to wave your hand in front of it? And if they aren't automatic, are they going to be like when I walk down to the bulb, go down Buchanan, I guess it is, and I, the lights there seem to be responsive the minute I wave my hand in front of it, it changes really fast? So that's my first question. And then my question about the storm drains and the regrading and the angle, however that is, there's a lot of flooding in the area of Albany where I live and I'm wondering if there's going to be, if there's flooding now or if the changing of the grade will be, will increase flooding? And I'm also wondering what the angle is that will be designed, where is the water going to flow? Like, for example, I live on Stanage between Washington and Solano and the water flows towards Washington, which is why Washington floods. So I'm just wondering, like, how are you going to try to control that? And then I had one more, oh, for the 20 feet on approach, the law that's going to go into effect next month, where will the stop signs be? I've been looking around at stop signs in Albany. I noticed sometimes they're right at the intersection, sometimes they're way back from the intersection. I'm wondering how that decision is made and where will it be? Will it be beginning of the red or will it be at the corner? I think, you know, and I love the idea of the speed bumps, whoever that was. Oh, yeah, one more thing is, I had an accident on Marin. I stepped down, I was, as a pedestrian, I stepped off of a curb into a, into a storm drain that isn't, didn't have any kind of grate over it and ended up in it with an ambulance. And I, right after my accident, a cone was put there and then when I went back and looked, you know, like months later, it hadn't been fixed. So I'm wondering if you're making sure that all the storm drains are covered so that people don't step down off the curb into a big hole? I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to the second commenter and then maybe we can address some of those questions.
Ian McLeod, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just one, one question. What is this project going to cost? I haven't heard that mentioned and I was part of discussions a long, long time ago when this first came to the Transportation Commission. And I'm just kind of, you know, my mind is kind of boggled here that we're doing this incredible repaving of this street and it's really ironic that our next item is going to be discussing an active transportation plan where everything you're doing on this street could very well be changed in the near future or not very distant future. So I just think it's an incredible wasted opportunity here. And I know this was initiated by an ADA settlement. And I do remember that the goal here was at least not to put any permanent infrastructure like concrete bulbouts in the way of what could be future protected cycle tracks. So, you know, I think that should have some discussion about what the eventual vision is for this street. And I really find it disturbing that we have to spend this money now and it's counterproductive to our eventual goals that we're going to discuss in the next item. You know, part of any major paving project should be a complete streets redesign and basically we're not getting anything really new here. It's just the status quo, exactly what we had before. The only benefit I see is that the traffic lanes are a little narrower, which I think is really good. I think that will help hopefully slow traffic down, but the fact that there were no traffic calming studies for this either, I think is mind boggling. You know, there could have been something like raised crossings at the intersections that could have acted as speed bumps, could help you also raise the intersections a little bit. Why wasn't that explored? You know, it just seems like there are just so many missed opportunities here. And I understand the imperative of the ADA settlement and that timeline, but I just really hate to see us spending all this money and then in the next item, plan on how to change it all. So, you know, it's, it's just unfortunate. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Staff want to address any of the questions that were?
I will start. First talking about Peralta. So one thing that's, you know, if you weren't here during the June 2022, it's hard to visualize the curb radius changes and I'm just going to try and kind of show, you know, these, the current curb lines are something like, like here at Peralta, so.
It's the existing curb line?
Yeah, so we are making, we are doing pretty significant curb radius changes that will affect, you know, turning speeds and Emma, you know, please chime in for more.
I'll also mention, yeah, shorter crossing distances as well.
Additionally, with the new curb ramp, a kind of layouts with the KSGs, it's a raised, a fairly large raised area right at the apex of these corners. So it actually provides kind of a secondary benefit beyond just the ADA constructability of kind of reinforcing the need to stay off that area.
And, and I will say, we also did evaluate hardened bulbouts at this intersection particularly and based off of the truck turning radius specifically for fire trucks. It just wasn't feasible for the right turn movements from Peralta onto Marin.
Justin is unfortunately not here today, but you know, we are in communication with him about transportation, traffic calming, but we, you know, we need to pave this street and we are working in coordination with him if there's small things that can be added. But again, we, this primarily is a pavement rehabilitation project and we need to, we already a few years behind due to the EB mud work that Allison mentioned earlier and we're trying to get this pushed out. Next, was the Peralta push buttons? Yes, those will be the, those kind of what you're seeing on Lower Solano, the kind of wave at it and it has audible information for those that may have hearing impairments. Yeah, it sounds like you're familiar with the exact type of buttons that will go along this entire stretch of the remaining Marin. Storm drains, we are, you know, a lot of these are cross drains and older systems, a lot are in poor shape. These will be new storm drains, new inlets that are connected to the storm drain main. If there's more you want to?
So Marin Avenue has a fairly large storm drain system that includes parts of the Berkeley Hills, Capistrano, is that the right? Tacoma area along with Upper Marin in Berkeley. So it ranges from a 66 inch down to when it enters the bay at around 80 inch, very large system. This was constructed in the 1940s by the city of Berkeley. Fortunately, at the time, not every intersection was connected into it. Approximately every other block on Marin has a small direct connection. By small, I do still mean like a 12 inch connection. Sometimes a four. We got rid of that though on phase one. But the cross drains flood. They flood when it, when the leaves come down, they flood when the, they're like a three inch high by 12 inch wide structure and a connected that brings water from one side of the intersection to the other. Still considered really surface flow. It's not really undergrounded in the sense that it's directed to an engineered storm drain. And at this point, they're functionally obsolete. We don't install these anymore. We try not to. And the metal that is supporting the top surface, which is usually the bottom of the asphalt at some of these cross streets, has rotted out and causes additional problems for both crew maintenance and even for pedestrians when some of the lids on these cross drains come up during the rain events, they will, they will pressurize and then lift off. And so, sorry, this project includes a significant amount of storm drain upgrades to bring the storm, all the corners directly into the engineered main.
All right, I think that's
There was, there was also a follow on question on
I'll have a few things to
I was still
And also on the storm drains, you know, these will not be in the path of travel. They will, we're not designing them, so if you're on a sidewalk, if you step off a sidewalk, you're in essentially a deepened gutter. This is actually part of our curb ramp design guidelines that I also mentioned earlier that we brought to commission in September, you know, when we're designing curb ramp. And there's stormwater infrastructure. We designed it outside of the ramp, but now specifically we're also looking at intended path of travel, you know? Maybe at the edge of a crosswalk, we will try, you know, we're looking to make sure where a pedestrian walks, a storm drain is not present. And if it is, there are ways to mitigate folks walking in that direction and again, referring to the curb ramp, because guidelines can help show kind of how we intend to do that. There was a, from the same resident, a question about the stop sign placement. I don't know if, Emma, if you want to kind of talk about that in regards to our, where we have stop signs on our cross streets?
Yes, I don't know if you want to go to a different intersection. That's, there we go, stop controlled. Yes, so let me see, maybe looking at Nielsen at this intersection is a good example at the northwest corner there. So the stop sign is placed at the same point as the stop line, which is four feet from the crosswalk. And we place it in the planter strip adjacent to the curb. So it should be visible. There shouldn't be any obstructions with trees or anything like that. I don't know if you want to highlight it, James, on your pointer where it's placed next to the stop it, James, on your pointer where it's placed next to the stop line?
Curb here, curb here. Stop sign is, all right. Sorry, I'm getting a little too much ink on here.
Start using multiple colors.
It's right here.
Trying to avoid the blood on the pavement, you know.
So there's also a question about the cost of the project and the scope of the project. So this project is larger than we anticipated as a paving project. Part of that, a good portion of that is because of the storm drain improvements. We have Streets Program under the CIP, which is intended to do paving, paving related projects. We do not have a separated, a separate storm program. In fact, we are actively working on the watershed management plan through, with council in order to identify kind of citywide storm drain needs and how we will go about creating a, I'm sorry, we do have a storm drain program. We do not have, it's mainly for repairs. It's not really focused on standalone storm drain projects. However, this project, given the ADA requirements and the need, it's a major arterial where repair of storm drains is very challenging. Plus, the condition of the existing storm drain laterals meant that we found a need for it and also a benefit to including the storm drain because it allows us to raise corners. Again, back to that, kind of trying not to completely remove all the existing asphalt and rebuild it, but maintain the existing kind of crowns of the street. There was a cost savings there. It did not fully offset storm drain improvements. We're putting in some very large pipe. Additionally, this project has added some, we have the pedestrian improvements with RFBs. We also have signal improvements and the pedestrian safety improvements with the curb radii reduction, the painted bulbouts amongst other things. We worked with Transportation Commission previously to find a way to minimize the amount of permanent improvements that enter into the roadway, asphalt roadway section in order to be able to have a future project should desire and funding allow to have that separated bike lane. Majority of the project costs here, though, are not for any improvements that would be costly to remove at a future date. I mean, they were talking about traffic striping and marking. And these will be ground out and part of a future rehab project, or pavement maintenance project. Generally, we, we should be maintaining our streets with slurry seals or multi-layer lifts of pavement maintenance treatment products every seven to 10 years. So these traffic stripings would be refreshed at that point. And if there are other projects, they, and funding allows, it could be incorporated at that time.
I think there was one question that you might not have addressed about, we talked about the technology of the push button, but is it programmed to not activate the walk signal unless the push button is pressed?
At this point, this project is, does not include kind of traffic signal phasing changes. So what we're looking at is kind of what the existing situation is. I think with this, the signal upgrades we're doing, that's, it's called recall, I think is what we're talking about here. That can be done with this project. It can be done outside of this project. The existing signals can do that if they're not already set up that way. I'm actually unfamiliar with.
So that's, that's like, even if we complete the project and then decided two years later that we wanted to change the, the phasing and change how, like what happens when you do or don't press the button? That's kind of a software level change at that point?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're on to commission discussion. Anybody have any?
I want to thank staff for this incredibly detailed plan that has been many years in the crafting. And I do agree that there's a balance here. The, the curb radii have been reduced, but there's still maintained room for future changes and possible cycle track or protected cycle way. There are some, you know, there's some compromises, but there's a lot that's going on here. So I think that's appropriate. Thank you for bringing this to us. I, I don't have any broad or specific actions. It's a little hard to take it all in, actually. And I'm going to trust that staff, for the most part, has, has done that detail work.
I guess I have one question about where the radii are being decreased. So if, the example you gave on Peralta where the sidewalk went like this and now it goes kind of like, like the outer part of it goes more like this, that means that at that corner, there's a lot more area of cement sidewalk, right? Like a piece of land that used to be asphalt roadway is now cement sidewalk. So the cement takes up more space? Is that?
Yeah, the cement will, but it also opens up more planter strip. Let me bring up my annotation. It brings up some more planter strip area here that previously didn't exist because the, that's where, you know, effectively the street was cutting through it. We actually are, especially on these larger ones like this southeast corner where, to our comments to our designer, we're going to be discussing soon is, do we need this much concrete?
Yeah, that was my question is, does all of that new area have to be concrete? Can some, some of that be green instead of?
Where we can fit minimum five foot width of, you know, the, the desired directional paths as well as what's going to inevitably become desire, you know, a desired path. We can get enough space where we're creating a planter strip that's feasible. That's not also going to become a hazard because it's too small. We're going to be trying to open it up.
What, what, what's too small?
I mean, if it's something small like a, you know, say four square feet, someone's not paying attention, running their little scooter, like a kid, for example, they're going to just hit a piece of grass, basically, they didn't see. So we want to make sure it's large enough that it's a feasible planter space.
Okay.
Adopt a micro park in a sidewalk near you.
So those decisions about additional planter areas will come later in the design? Or would they be shown to us in a future update of these plans? Or is that on the ground?
We aren't planning to bring it back to commission, mostly just because we're, we're going to keep five, you know, we're maintaining the five foot desired width for sidewalks. And it's mostly just a feasibility thing. Because even during construction, we might have situations, for example, the Peralta, if it's bedrock, it may not be a good spot to place a planter strip because it will become a giant mud puddle.
So those decisions are something that, that is made at the time of construction rather than as a planning in advance?
We will be showing them on the plan set when they get to 100%. That will be shown to council. But it may have a call out saying, you know, to consult inspector, engineer during construction if it's unfeasible or if certain conditions are discovered like bedrock.
Okay, thanks.
I want to comment that I like a lot of what I'm seeing here. We're seeing more space for pedestrians on the sidewalk rather than in the street, shorter crosswalks, bike lanes that are going from five feet wide to eight feet if you count the buffers. Because if we painted buffers in the existing bike lanes, we'd have a one foot wide bike lane with two foot buffers on both sides. We're substantially increasing the bike and pedestrian space here, reducing the traffic lanes, which will traffic calm. I think this is a significant change compared to the, the 2005 restriping and road diet. So a lot of this is huge improvement. I know that everything kind of goes incrementally, squaring off the corners. When we did the, the traffic management plan many years ago, one of the big concerns is these huge rounded corners and cars come flying around the corner. Well, there's no space for them to fly around the corner anymore. So a lot of nuanced stuff, but there's a lot. And I think that this is a significant improvement. The awareness of the design for potential future modification to cycle tracks and things like that is great because, again, the, the road diet that we started back in 1998 was the conversations got going on that one implemented in 2005. Basically started at the east end of the city, went down Marin to, you know, a block and a half away from San Pablo. And we did the next phase and went west. Now we're coming back the other way. It's, it's taken time. We, we don't have infinite funds. And I think the incremental approach to this has been responsible and substantially quite a change if you look at what's occurred over the last 20 years. So I just, I want to say thank you. I'm excited to see continuation in that progress and our standards keep improving. You know, the vibrotactile push buttons and all these things. There, there are so many elements in this that are a significant improvement versus when I was a kid walking up and down the street and had huge intersections to cross for again. Cars might come flying around the corner. So, good job.
If I can add to that, I would like to thank Fareed and Matthew Ridgway, who happens to be here tonight for their work on the original traffic calming plan that we're building on. It's great that you're here tonight to see this.
Do we have a motion? Need any more discussion?
I move that we recommend the, the plan as presented to the city council.
I'll second that.
If you want to do the roll call.
Mr. Burns?
Hi.
Commissioner Chancy?
Yes.
Commissioner Javinal?
Hi.
Commissioner Milkrosky?
Yes.
Mr. Ping?
Yes.
Commissioner Virgil McLaughlin?
Yes.
Two, five, two. Goals and conditions. Thank you for your patience. We are moving on to item five two, the active transportation plan, goals and existing conditions. One moment to set up. and existing conditions, as well as a network development approach of the active transportation plan. And then we'll get into some next steps after that. So I'd just like to first introduce everyone who's working on this project in the city and with our consultants. Myself and Justin Fried are working on the city staff level. And then we have representation from our consultant team and Parametrics. So we have Pete Rishetti, who is joining us online, and Jen Schreiber, who is in the audience. And then we have Matthew Ridgway, who's joining us from Farr and Pierce. Just a quick recap on the background and process here of the active transportation plan. So we're creating this active transportation plan, which will serve as both our pedestrian, our plan for both pedestrian and bicycle facilities in the city of Albany. It will guide street design, city capital, project prioritization, and all season programs. And we have ambitious walk and bike mode share goals in our previous active transportation plan and the climate action and adaptation plan. And this is expected to help us meet those goals. So our last ATP was developed in 2012 and updated in 2019. And so this is a brand new active transportation plan. This is kind of standing on the backs of giants. It builds on a long line of planning milestones by the city over the past 30 years. And this is a timeline of those. Hopefully, you can see it all. Sorry about the technical difficulties tonight. So this is not in full screen mode, but we've got, we've, going back almost 30 years, have been doing a lot in regards to bicycle and pedestrian improvements and related infrastructure and plans. And so this is the latest in that long series of plans. So we're going to, we're developing this plan over three phases spanning between 12 and 18 months with, and ending with the adoption of the plan probably sometime realistically in the summer, fall of 2025. Each phase coincides with key outcomes that the city has established. We have a statement of vision and goals for the first phase, a series of bicycle and pedestrian network diagrams for the second phase, and a series of bicycle and pedestrian programs, design standards and priority projects in the third phase. This is a kind of a more detailed timeline here. So you can kind of see generally where we are. Here's the Transportation Commission touch point on the fifth. And then we're hoping to, the fifth of December, and we're hoping to come back to the commission in, you know, late winter, early spring to talk about phase two, and then return again in late spring, early summer to, to talk about phase three. Each phase has a cascading touch point with various groups, stakeholder groups. So we have a technical advisory committee that includes agency staff and staff from other cities, including MTC and Alameda CTC. We've got public workshops, the last of which we had in late October, targeted meetings with relevant organizations. And then we're going to present to the Transportation Commission as well as city council in each phase. So as you can kind of see here, this is all the work we've done thus far, all the major milestones. So we had our kickoff meeting in mid-July and had our first public open house on October 24th, which you are all at as commissioners. Thank you for your attendance. And we are meeting today to discuss kind of our initial findings. And then, you know, as we're obviously going to be going through reviewing plans, developing the conditions that we were talking about. And we've got the website that we continue to update. And we'll continue to have meetings with other stakeholders this whole time. So I'm going to pass it off to Parametrics and Farr and Pierce to chat a little bit about our goals and, and a little bit more about the existing conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, and I hope you all can hear me. This is Pete Rishetti from Parametrics. I thank you all for having the time on your agenda for us tonight. It's good to see several of the commissioners. We saw you at the public meeting back in October. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I'm happy to be able to join and present some of our progress. I am joined in person tonight by Jen Schreiber from Parametrics and Matthew Ridgeway from Fair and Pierce. Thank you, Commissioner, for giving Matthew a shout out before. I'm glad that the timing worked out, so he could be here for this. So first, I want to cover just a little bit about the active transportation plan goals to kind of kick it off. And then Jen is gonna discuss a little bit of the existing conditions, meaning kind of what's out there now. And then Matthew's gonna discuss some of the more technical details of our approach into how we're going to move forward after this phase into developing the actual networks and the supporting policies. So if we go to the next slide, first speaking about the goals themselves. The goals are centered around four areas of emphasis listed below. Access and connectivity, safety and comfort, equitable outcomes, and implementation and funding. Those areas are designed to reflect shared community values and to provide a starting point for discussions about the active transportation plan. The goals also have a lot in them and a lot kind of underlying them, and they reflect a lot of relevant guidance. And they're drawn from a lot of sources, including a lot of guidance the city has already produced, including the general plan, the transportation element from that plan, the current active transportation plan, which Ben covered, which we are updating now, and also guidance from the state and guidance from the countywide, the countywide ATP by Alameda CTC. And we also did a pretty comprehensive, a pretty comprehensive review of recently adopted active transportation plans from a lot of peer cities across the state and some across the West Coast. So, there's a lot of things that went into it, but with all that, we really tried to make the goals very simple and very clear. And so we really tried to boil it down to some very simple common statements and shared values. So each goal that we're gonna go through, there's one slide for each, each goal, is a simple statement. It's just what, what we tried to be as simple as possible. And then each goal, again, is intended to be clear and simple and distinct. And what those goals kind of describe is what we, I guess what I would view as like the ultimate condition that we want to see from the system. On the slides below each goal statement, you'll see kind of a list of, I think what we call objectives and policy areas, essentially things that kind of answer more specifics about some ideas for the how, in terms of how we will get to each goal, and it goes in, in, into more detail. What you're gonna see on the slides is a sample of some of those ideas. It's not intended to be a comprehensive list yet. In the next phase of the study, we're gonna get down into more details. But for tonight, our primary goal for the goals is to review those top level goals, the four big statements that you see on each slide. Those are gonna guide our work moving forward as we develop the more specific stuff that you see below it. And a, after this, as Ben mentioned, we're gonna go to city council next and hopefully get their endorsement of those goals as, as, as well. And again, that's gonna kind of guide everything moving forward. So with all that preamble out of the way, if we can go to the next slide, we'll cover goal number one, which is focused on the emphasis area of access and connectivity. And I'm, I'm just gonna read the statement. Again, the goal is to be very simple and, and clear here. So, goal number one, provide an active transportation network that encourages people of all ages and abilities to walk, bike, and roll to meet their daily needs, including access to transit, work, school, commerce, and recreation. I know there's a lot in there, but again, we tried to make it as simple as possible, again focusing on the, the core goals of the system, which is to provide that access and to provide connectivity between facilities in a seamless way. So that's goal number one. Again, you see below there on goal number one, potential objectives and policy areas could include things like that. That's not a comprehensive list. To the extent that we want to get into details tonight, we can talk about that. But again, the main goal tonight is to get the, the top line goals through this group and get any recommendations that you have on those goals so we can bring that to council. So with that, if we can go to slide two, and again, I think we'll have time to, to come back and discuss any of these if we need to. Goal number two, focusing on safety and comfort. Design and maintain high, high quality facilities that make Albany a safe and comfortable place to walk, bike, and roll. We're gonna talk a lot about comfort and safety as we get into the next parts of the presentation. Next slide. Goal number three, focusing on equitable outcomes. Ensure the needs of all users, including disadvantaged populations, are integral factors in project prioritization and project development. And then finally, goal number four, focusing on implementation and funding. Allocate sufficient resources to implement active transportation projects and programs on an ongoing basis. So again, very, very high level goals, things that we really hope reflect some shared values. So, we know as we get into the details and some of the nuts and bolts, there may be some areas where people might disagree about the types of facilities we want. And we want to be able to refer back to these goals and make sure that we are all working toward the same thing. Said, okay, we, we want to make sure that we have safe streets and that they're comfortable for all, for all users, and that we have that type of connectivity to the places people need to go. So, again, trying to keep it simple and clear to start with, and then we'll get into the kind of the more details as we move on. So, that's a brief summary of the goals. I do believe we'll have time to discuss this in detail, but right now, I'll turn it over to Jen, and she's gonna discuss a little bit about existing conditions and what's out there now, to set the stage for the discussion by Matthew after that.
Thanks, Pete. So before we can think about updating the network and coming up with improvements, we really want to understand what is currently on the ground in Albany. So we set out to review the existing conditions in the city. Go to the next slide, please. So first, we'll focus on pedestrian conditions, and this is just some examples of some common facility types for pedestrian improvements. And a number of these you can find across the city, and I'll just go through them quickly for those who may not be as familiar. So pedestrian hybrid beacons are pedestrian activated, and they give vehicles a red light, causing vehicles to stop so pedestrians can cross the street. Leading pedestrian intervals give the walk signal to pedestrians before the light turns green, allowing pedestrians to get further into the crosswalk to improve visibility before drivers have a chance to go, particularly for making right turns. Herb extensions, as was discussed in the previous presentation, also known as bull bouts, physically bump out the curb and the shortens crossings as well as increases visibility for pedestrians before they step into the roadway. And then rectangular rapid flashing beacons and high visibility crosswalks are used to enhance the visibility of pedestrians crossing. They are pedestrian activated and activate a flashing light to promote awareness of drivers before pedestrians step into the roadway. Next slide, please. So this map shows a number of recent pedestrian projects under Cagan in the city. And as you can see, a lot here has already been done to improve safety for pedestrians, particularly along San Pablo Avenue and Buchanan and Marin, going back to 2014 with the Buchanan street, bikeway, and intersection improvements, all the way to more recent projects such as the Aloney Greenway signalized intersection improvements this year. Next slide, please. So moving on to bicycle facilities, again, these are a lot of things that we can see across the city already. I'll just go through them briefly. Shared use paths are facilities for both cyclists and pedestrians physically off of the roadway. Separated bikeways can be on the roadway but are separated from vehicles with vertical elements. They can also be at curb level, as you can see in this picture here, or at sidewalk level, I should say. Bike lanes are physically located in the roadway and are designated using paint. They can be buffered or nonbuffered, as is the case with this photo. A bike boulevard is a facility in which cyclists share the roadway with drivers. And in these cases, there are speed management or traffic calming elements that are in place such as traffic, or sorry, such as speed humps. Bike routes are similar to bike boulevards, but they lack those traffic calming elements. And oftentimes, they can have higher speeds or higher volumes than you would find on bike boulevards. And then lastly, mixed bikeway types are roadways that may have one type of facility on one side and another on another. So if you go to the next slide, you can see the, the existing bike network for the city. As you can see in the legend and from the different colors, there are a number of these different types of facilities that exist. We do have a number of north-south bike networks or bike facilities, as well as east and west connectivity as well, particularly on Washington and Buchanan and Marin. So we wanted to see, you know, this is the existing bike network, but how does this sort of stack up against the previous ATP? We can see that on the next slide. So here we have our existing bike facility. Those are the solid lines, and then those dashed lines are the proposed bike network as part of the 2012 ATP. So we can see that there are a number of facilities that had been planned or recommended as part of the ATP that have not been implemented as of this time. So we can really use this when we're starting to think about developing our bicycle network for the updated ATP. And Matthew can talk more about that, so I will turn things over to him.
As, as, can't even say my name is Matthew Ridgeway. I'm a principal with Fair and Pierce. I was a longtime resident of Albany, moved here in 1994, raised three kids who went through Albany schools, served on this commission when it was called Traffic and Safety for about a decade, and was one of the founding members of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I guess first, before I jump into the future network, I want to talk quickly about where you've come from. In 1994, when I first moved here, I think the Aloney Greenway was the only bikeway in the city of Albany. There wasn't a way to get to the, to the edge of the bay. The interchange at Buchanan had not been reconstructed yet into a full interchange, which it is today, and there was no path that led you there. Marin Avenue was a four-lane undivided highway, and it took, I think it was one of the ex-mayors getting struck in a crosswalk that finally got the city motivated to do something about it. It's, to this day, probably the highest volume four to three, we call it a four to three road diet, because it went from four, two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction with two-way left turn. It's the highest volume four to three road diet I've ever worked on, at 28,000 vehicles a day. So it's quite an accomplishment. And so I guess I want to praise the city of Albany for all of the groundwork that you have already done. Marin Avenue is, in my mind, the premier thing that you did, that it deserve a lot of praise for, but the Greenway actually did a lot of realignment of intersections. The crosswalks used to be 20 to 30 feet away from the intersections with Masonic, if you recall, and it was a very strange place for people to be crossing. The lower part of Solano was filled with giant eucalyptus trees, which were ripping up your sidewalks, and you did a full reconstruction of all those and had all the corner bulbs. And you did, with cooperation from the region, you did the Bay Trail and other improvements along Buchanan as part of Caltrans improvements. You've done a bunch of work along Buchanan to, to make that much friendlier than it used to be. So I guess I want to first say congrats on what I think is really tremendous work. Do I have this? Who's, who's going ahead on the slides? There we go. Thank you. We're gonna talk about network development next, sort of what's next for the city of Albany. And I, I got really excited when we came to talk to City about this project because the notion of, of, as I said, Albany's done some tremendous things. But the notion of actually taking an entire city bikeway network and making it all high comfort is tremendous, just like Marin Avenue, just like some of the other things Albany has. Oh, I forgot to mention Adams and Cane's as well, which you might think is just kind of a rote project, but in fact, there is no other jurisdiction I'm aware of in the U.S. that, that has bike, a two-way bikeway on one-way streets. So it's, kudos to the city of Albany for sort of being on the progressive end. And in this ambition you have for the next network, the idea of having high comfort facilities all over the city of Albany, I think, is amazing. If you can go to the next slide, Pete, or whoever's doing this. For this project, we have done input, a bunch of different materials. We of course have community input, which was a little discussion of. We also used a level of traffic, level of comfort. We used two metrics, level of traffic stress, and then we did some adjustments to that based on community input that we received. And I've already seen some comments from strollers and rollers about the LTS analysis. I'm, I'm happy to sort of go into some of that. We also used a collision analysis, which is pretty typical of these types of studies, and often very revealing about specific intersections that need special attention. And then we've had a lot of conversations with City and other agencies just about what's practical, what's feasible, and making sure we coordinate with other projects like the one you just saw. And then when you learn about after this, about the connection along Adams Street into El Cerrito, I hope, at some point in the future. Next slide. The workshop was on October 24th. As noted, there was about 40 participants. Included a lot of mapping. I, I think it was, I, I wasn't there, but by, by the accounts that I've heard, it was very productive in terms of really hearing from people about locations that could use some additional refinements and adjustments. Also have a public website, next slide, which if you haven't gone to it, you can scan this QR code and it will take you there. And that's a good tool for us to get additional comments. Go to the next slide, it shows that we've received about 347 comments to date, and the survey, I think, was closed within the last two or three days, so it is closed at this point. On the right is a heat map of all the comments we received, which are predominantly comments about areas that people would like to see further improvements. There are a couple of locations, I noted one at San Pablo and Dartmouth where people are praising pedestrian hybrid beacon, you already installed that location, but most of the comments are not actually praised. Most are saying, I'd like to see something else here, or something different, something better. So we have a lot of comments around many facilities, where areas that continue to be challenges for walking and biking in Albany. Specific intersections and pedestrian crossings continue to be an issue, which is a pretty common theme in, in our industry. I desire for more traffic calming and/or enforcement of, of traffic speeds predominantly. Just a general call for more bicycle infrastructure, and I think more comfortable bicycle infrastructure. So it's, maybe it's a little more of a more intense level of bicycle infrastructure than, than is currently existing in parts of Albany. And then I think one of the unique themes of each of the plans, I think this is the fourth, if I'm not mistaken, iteration of, of an active transportation plan in Albany. Each of them sort of have its, has its own theme, and I, I view the 2019 one as one that really sort of stepped up Albany's attention to the pedestrian side of active transportation. And, and we're getting back, and the, and the theme on this one really seems to be about making all the bicycle facilities very high comfort, and an acknowledgement that some of the areas that experience the most conflict and challenge in making them comfortable are actually areas that have high, high curb activity, which are your schools, and a lot of the commercial areas where, where people are dropping, doing, dropping off goods or having high turnover parking. So I think there is a lot of attention. I'm hoping one of the products of this plan is that we do develop more specific recommendations for how to take those really challenging areas and make them high comfort. And then as we heard earlier today, there's a lot of issues or desires just to have improved lighting and visibility. I also noted that it was predominantly wintertime when your, your traffic crashes and were spiking. So, next slide. I guess before, I, I think you've all seen this, as I said, we have a level of traffic stress analysis that is based on science. I'd say the bicycle field is one that is probably 40 years behind the automobile field in terms of the evolution of the tools that are used to assess, but there is more and more of a body of science behind it. And LTS is a, is a methodology that actually has a good basis in surveying users about, does this, is this facility that feels comfortable for you, and then correlating that to what are the design attributes of that facility. And so, I know there's some critique of, or I, I already saw some critique from strollers and rollers on the LTS. I'd love to get into the details of it, because when I looked at the LTS results, they kind of checked for me. They, I thought, oh, that's, that seems about right. But I, but I also think, yeah, you, you made me have more insights than, than I need to hear about. The idea of having high comfort routes throughout Albany, as I said, is super inspiring for me. I also want to make the point that it's not gonna be easy. A lot of the roadways in Albany that are gonna be the most challenging are gonna require, are things like your arterials and collectors, which you're not gonna make low stress without some sort of which you're not going to make low stress without some sort of separated bikeway, protected. And then in the residential environment, which you have a lot of streets that have great potential to be great low-stress bikeways, but there's going to be a lot that needs to be done in terms of managing the speed and volume of traffic on those streets or doing protected bikeways, which is going to have implications for parking. So I'm really excited about this notion and would love to sort of work with you guys to make sure that we identify the key projects that get you to there. And I also want to put it out there that it will not be easy. So it's going to take a lot of sort of continued political will to do that. We first did a level of traffic stress and comfort analysis of the city as a whole. And it's revealing exactly what you would have expected, at least I think so, in that the areas that have the highest level of discomfort or very low comfort are predominantly arterials and collectors, which are shown mostly in orange and red in these. So San Pablo, Buchanan, Pierce, Cleveland, and then some of the other streets like Peralta that we were just talking about, Santa Fe. Streets that you would expect to be low comfort, Solano Avenue. And then the second thing that we did was to apply this, I'm sorry, before I do. The other thing we noted is that the areas around schools, where we did plug in an additional factor to talk about curb stress. So that is an adjustment that we made to the general LTS methodology to acknowledge that in your schools where there's pickup and drop-off activities and in commercial corridors where there's a lot of curbside activity, that those are areas that have a higher level of stress and we should identify that. So you can see a lot of the frontages along schools and retail areas are also identified as being generally medium or lower or low comfort facilities. The second cut we took at this, if you can go to the next slide, was just to sort of do this, it's the same color coding, but we've limited it to just what is currently your designated bike routes in the city of Albany. And we're not presuming that these will be the exact same at the end of this plan. I know there's talk about making Curtis Street a bikeway, or at least I've heard there's talk about making Curtis Street a bikeway as well. And maybe there'll be some other adjustments to the overall route system. But I think 80, 90% of it will probably survive in terms of the streets that bikeways are designated for now will continue to be that in the future. So we did this analysis. And again, you can see that there's a lot of potential within the residential environments to get a lot of bicycle and pedestrian, or bicycle travel, and that most of those streets are either medium comfort, and there's a small portion of them that are high comfort. And this is getting to that point of earlier, just about, if we're actually trying to take these ones that are yellow under current conditions, which let me say, most agencies in the U.S., maybe all except for the city of Albany, would say if it's an LTS one or two, good enough. And so they would say anything that is high or medium is good enough. But I love the idea that Albany's going to say, we want to make sure our bike facilities are usable by all people, including inexperienced cyclists and young cyclists. So more power to you. But these are the streets on which it will take a lot of trade-off decisions to make sure that you can accomplish lower-stress facilities there. Go ahead, Ken.
If you're open. In this map, Buchanan is shown as a low or mixed comfort? I can't tell. Low comfort? Very low comfort?
What street? I'm sorry.
Buchanan Avenue.
Yep.
And there is a cycle track, essentially, a shared walking and biking path, so.
It's the westbound that's red.
It's only the westbound that's red? Yeah, I'm seeing a lot of.
I had the same comment, actually, when I looked at this as well. So they're actually showing the separate bikeway as a parallel facility. So the parallel facility is shown as green, but the road itself is shown as red. And you might argue, aren't they sort of in the same right-of-way? And shouldn't we just give the city credit for the road being? But this is the way that.
It's impossible to get to the bikeway from the north, so no.
I didn't understand that.
Can't cross Buchanan to get to the.
It's extremely hard to get to the Buchanan Street bikeway from the north or from the west. So effectively, you can't access it from a lot of places. So I would say it's perfectly fair to call it a high-stress facility. Someone who rides it regularly, and I just say, I can't be bothered to go all the way out of my way and get across the street. It's going to take me five minutes.
Gotcha. Either we improve that connection or we add better facilities on the street itself. And then you can see that on the streets like Marin Avenue, which we were just talking about, in order to accomplish low-stress facilities or high-comfort facilities on a street like Marin or the lower portion of Buchanan, it's going to require protected bike lanes, the sort that we were just talking about. Same for Solano Avenue, presumably, if you were to designate that as part of the bikeway system as well. Next slide. The other thing we looked at was hotspots. So this is all the hotspots based on, this is the TIM system, which is the traffic injury mapping system that UC Berkeley SafeTrack generates. It's just bike and ped crashes. We did weight any crash that killed a severe injury, got a higher weight. But, and so it's a little different than the analysis you did in the local road safety plan in 2023, but comes up with pretty similar results. Seven of the, there's 11 spaces, intersections identified in this. Seven of them are identical to the locations that were identified in your local road safety plan. So I think this is important and another benchmark for us to look at. What are the specific spot locations, intersections that need interventions? In that vein, next slide. You can see you've already done many of those. So you can see a whole bunch of improvements have taken place along San Pablo Avenue. I should note, the crash statistics that we just showed you were 10 years' worth of data. So many of them are relatively old. Crashes taking place before some of these improvements were implemented. That's pretty common within our industry because fortunately, pedestrian and bicycle crashes are relatively rare. And so in order to get a robust dataset, we generally look back a longer distance than you would for a typical crash statistic analysis, vehicle crash statistic analysis. So, but anyways, you can see that six of these locations are already addressed through other spot improvements. I think it's worth going out to see whether those really is everything we want to do or whether we would like to do further enhancements at those six locations. But at least gives us a lot of hope and allows us to focus on the remaining five locations with more detailed evaluations. And the last one. This slide actually is the last in the network development section, but it has a lot of sort of, especially in the lower-left portion of it, a lot of what I think is sort of where the rubber meets the road on thinking about your system. Our next step in this process is to select a series of locations, I think it's nine, that we will look at in more detail and develop design concepts for. And in my view, what you want to do is to look at your network as a whole and figure out how it is, you can pick certain streets, like maybe there's two north-south current residential bike boulevard streets that you select that are representative of other north-south bike boulevards throughout Albany, and they become essentially your prototypes. Let's figure a solution for these two that is applicable to these other six. So this is my guidance to you. Like when we're picking the nine, I would think about it from the perspective of, well, we need to figure out how to solve this north-south bike boulevard problem and make them all super-high comfort. So these are the two we're going to pick, and then these are the ones that are representative of that. Similarly, east-west connections. I suspect we're going to want to select streets that are, these are probably less typical. Streets like Washington, which just has an unusual configuration and width. And then, of course, Marin, and then, of course, Solano Avenue. I will note, Solano Avenue is also addressed, I think the portion from Masonic to Tularia is addressed in a separate task item that has a specific design associated with it. So that doesn't hap, of the nine locations that we have to select from, you don't have to select one in there because that's addressed in a separate task. But we did hear a lot about Solano, especially by Cornell School in terms of people wanting to improve that. I suggest we pick one or two school drop-off locations that we think are prototypical of other school drop-offs throughout Albany and develop a specific solution for that that we think is applicable more broadly to a whole bunch of school drop-offs within the city of Albany. And then similarly, I suggest we look at some of the major arterials and intersections from that base and sort of trying to find some that we think are sort of prototypical improvements. We'll also make sure that we address some of the other hotspots that we saw, especially the five that weren't addressed in the six interventions that have already been made. And we might want to go back and look at some of the six that were made. But that's sort of my guidance to you in terms of how I think you should focus in on the locations where you're going to develop more specific design concepts. I think, I don't know if it's, or Pete is wrapping up.
Thanks, Matthew. I think it's me to wrap up, and then we can get into discussion. Matthew, thanks for all that info. We really tried to, you know, cover as much of the technical stuff as we could without getting too deep in the weeds. So hopefully that kind of touched on where we're going next. I did want to clarify, you know, Matthew mentioned the selection of nine or 10 focus areas. That is something that's in our scope. We are not there yet, and it's not an action item for the commission tonight to have to select any certain areas. We just wanted to kind of give you a preview of where we're going next. We really want to get the goals and the high-level guidance there tonight, take a look at what's out there and the feedback that we've heard so far. And then we're going to embark on the next phase of the study, which really tries to get, you know, very specific. And we will come back to this body, we'll come back to the council and the TAC and all those groups to review those focus areas and some of the specific recommendations in a later part of the study. So with that said, go to the next slide. I think it's a schedule. Again, this just looks at the schedule. This is a graphic that you've seen. I know there's a lot of stuff on here. The big picture we want to show is there's kind of three phases to the study. We are just wrapping up Phase One goals and existing conditions, as I mentioned. And we're just kind of getting into Phase Two, facilities and policies. So that's where we're headed. And I think there's just one more slide left to specifically list out some of the next things that we're going to do. We wanted to go to the council to present the goals and the existing conditions and a summary of the input from the community and from the commission here. Our target for that is January or February, once the new council is seated and we're working with staff to get that scheduled. Now, that'll really kind of formally conclude that Phase One. We're going to begin developing the actual draft active transportation network using the inputs that Matthew and Jen went over. We do want to develop, as I went over, policies and objectives to support each goal, some of those kind of specific answering the how. And then we also want to begin planning for the next phase of engagement activities, which kind of follows right on the heels of that, looking at February, March, kind of spring timeframe to go to the TAC, go back to this body, go out to the community, and have another workshop-type-style event. And so that concludes our summary. I know we covered a lot of things. I think the last slide is just like a thank you slide. Thank you. But we're ready for questions or discussion. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions?
Well, I know we're going to have some discussion about the level of comfort issue. We've already received some written comment. I'm sure we'll hear some spoken comment about that. But you mentioned, just to kind of prepare the way for productive discussion on that, you mentioned that the coding of four colors that you assigned in this draft is based on some science. And I would just like to hear a little bit more about that. And like maybe as one example, some of the local streets are colored green and some are colored yellow, and that's a distinction that, and some of the advocacy we've received has suggested that they should all be colored yellow and not green. But you've made a distinction between the green and the yellow, and I'd just like to know more about what that distinction is and what it means and what it comes from.
Yeah. For sure. I'd love to, maybe if I could kind of start the discussion on that and take a stab at that. And then Matthew, maybe you can come in and let me know if I missed anything. But, you know, overall, there's a kind of a widely-known, and I would say widely-accepted, but also widely-known to be very basic method called level of traffic stress. And it's been around for, I don't know, about 15 years or so. And its intent was to kind of measure the quality and the comfort level of bicycle facilities. The kind of, the very strict original metric only looks at two factors. And it is the number of traffic lanes, the number of car lanes, and the speed of the roadway. And those are the only two things that it, you know, looks at. So we fully, as, you know, planners in this field, recognize that that is an incomplete look at the factors that truly make biking, you know, comfortable on a street. So that was the point where we started. We did want to base it on a widely-accepted metric. So that was where we started. But I think as Matthew covered, there's a lot of factors that went into that to refining that. And so the first thing that we did is we looked at all the community input that we heard, both online and at the meeting, and asked, you know, does this map reflect the level of comfort that you feel? And we got a lot of really good input. And some of the things that we heard was, you know, for this street and that street in this place, no, it doesn't. Or maybe it does sometimes, but during the mornings and afternoons when there's school pickups and drop-offs going on, it's really not comfortable at all around these streets right here. So then we took that input and kind of, instead of using the official metric, level of traffic stress, now we kind of, that's one of the inputs. We changed it to level of comfort because we really wanted to reflect that lived experience. So the kind of metric, the science was a starting point. And then we added factors based on community input, including lowering the level of comfort around school drop zones. I'm trying to remember some of the other ones. I think just actually manually changing some of them. Oh, on high curb, curb activity areas such as commercial zones. And Matthew, I'm trying to remember on the spot some of the other ways that we modified the metric. But I just want to note that we did want to base it on a metric. We wanted to base it on science. But we recognized that it's an incomplete look. So we really tried to apply input and judgment to have it more accurately reflect that. We don't need to get, you know, super rigid on, you know, this should be orange, this should be yellow. It's really meant to reflect the input of the community. So if there's a strong feeling that something should be orange or yellow, it's our kind of, it's not super-rigid, so, you know, we can just change that. But again, the goal is to really identify where are the areas that need improvement on the network. And the overall goal is to get to a high-comfort network everywhere. And so whether it's a yellow or an orange, you know, maybe isn't so important as if something is green, it needs to be truly green. And that's, I think, maybe where we want to look. Matthew, I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add to that or if you think that was a fairly comprehensive.
I think it's pretty good. I just want to note that I think the streets that are probably the most difficult to assess are the residential streets. The way that our methodology works, the two primary factors affecting the level of stress and the correlating comfort level are the volume of traffic and the speed of traffic. We only put something green in a location that we actually had a traffic count and a speed count to justify those, the ultimate LTS scores. If we didn't have a traffic count, then we assumed it had higher than 3,000 vehicles per day, which is a pretty conservative assumption. And so, but that's not to say that, as Pete said, that all of these things are sort of trying to quantify people's perception of conditions. If you have a different perception of that condition, let's hear about it. And the other thing I guess I would say is I don't want to get hung up on the analytics or on level of traffic stress or comfort. Or I guess if we come up with a series of improvements, the concepts for improvements for residential bike boulevard streets that you're happy with, there's no reason not to apply that concept even to the green streets if that's what you want to do just for consistency of practice. So I guess I'm wanting to get to solutions rather than debate the intermediate sort of analyses.
One follow-up question. You mentioned that you started with a color coding based on the criteria that you were working with, and then you modified that based on public input. Would you say that most or all of the public input was a request to change to a darker color, like to take a street that you had labeled as higher comfort and change it to lower comfort? Or was there ever public input suggesting a change in the other direction?
The only direction we made was to lower.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Is there anyone who, in person, who would like to make comment?
Yes, please. Hello. First of all, I was at the public comment event two months ago, and it was awesome. I appreciated how there were many different methods to get input for people who might not feel super-comfortable speaking. It definitely warmed me up to have the map activities. It was really great to engage with community members. All your staff and consultants were super-knowledgeable and had really great ideas that we could bounce off of. So that was awesome, and I hope that our future events are really productive and collaborative like that. So thank you. On the level of comfort, a specific road that I think I heard a lot of consensus on at the public event was specifically Cane's, which is designated here as green. But in the conversations with. But in the conversations with everyone in the, in that event, I think many people tend to use Stanage instead of Canes as a bikeway. Canes crosses a lot of intersections that, it's stop signs along Canes, but the traffic doesn't stop across it, which is hard for bicyclists. So I'm not sure how the in-person comments were weighted with the online input, but I definitely think there was a lot of great conversation that I was part of with a lot of people who agreed that Stanage often is preferred over Canes. So maybe take a look at that level of comfort. And then I also want to echo and emphasize what you guys were talking about on Buchanan. Totally, it's super hard to get over there, so maybe I would just apply that principle to every other location we're thinking about. How do we get to each of those places, the connectivity of each area? And because, just looking at those colors at Buchanan without knowing that extra detail of how to actually access the green side while crossing the red side, those are some good details, so, thank you.
Thank you. Going to have to read to try to fit this in. Hi, I'm Tarek Ahmed. We got what we hoped to be our forever home in Albany a few years ago because we loved how uniquely walkable and bikable it is, the proximity to BART and the schools. It's special that we walk to groceries and bike to school and BART, and so much of the East Bay and the Bay Area and the nation entails having to get into a car to go anywhere. And we have a rare panacea here where we can enable a different and healthier lifestyle. I heard what average cities would do with the situation in the presentation, and to me, that's anathema to what we want here. I heard the statement of, we'll need protected bikeways to accomplish some of these goals, and I think that's a great idea to propose, as opposed to shying away from it and assuming it's a non-starter. I appreciate the many positive active transportation updates we've seen around Albany these past years, and it feels great to be part of a community that values these. We have a bucket bike that I use to take my daughter to preschool, and I'm encouraged to see so many more bikes with kids in tow around. These days, she's also flying down sidewalks ahead of us on her balance bike and then stops so we can guide her through intersections. There's a great community feel in the morning when kids are walking up the Greenway to school, along with neighbors, walking and biking. On a separate note, it's not easy to make meetings in person at this time of the night as a parent of a toddler, and this is my first time here. But for every me here, there's plenty of Albany families who don't know about this happening tonight, or did and couldn't make it, even to call in when you're wrestling with dinner and bedtime. I added pins that do show up on the ATP project website but aren't reflected in the heat map shown in the presentation, as I probably missed a cutoff. Talking to neighbors and other, and parents of our preschool, none of them knew about the website. I miss the one open house for the ATP, and I strongly feel that one isn't enough, along with more successful outreach. I take issue with the high comfort level designation of suitable for all ages and abilities on many Albany streets, and that it was rooted in level of traffic data. All ages and abilities is a big statement. Regardless of car frequency, the many street parked cars and driveways with cars backing out lack enough daylighting and lead to blind spots for all involved that make riding on streets with unprotected bikeways frankly not suitable for all ages and abilities. Even if you keep street designations the way they are now in the presentation, it's incredibly unfortunate that hardly any homes in Albany have a high comfort green path all the way to a school, let alone all the schools. I'd like to see an ATP that makes that possible, along with biking to and around Solano. I'll close with saying that the first Hawk Light I ever saw in my life and used was the one at Dartmouth and San Pablo, and I find them to be a great idea, amazingly empowering for pedestrians and cyclists, be great to see more. Stop there. Thanks.
Thank you. We have some online commenters, I think?
We do have several hands raised. First, Brian Martin, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Brian Martin, a resident of the 620 block of Adams Street. Couple things. One is, you've already touched on these and some other people have as well, but I just wanted to emphasize that I too find that the color coding on the comfort zones not appropriate. For example, high comfort, I think your own definition is that people of all abilities and people of all ages feel safe on it. It's hard to imagine that, you know, kindergarteners riding their bike can do that on any Albany street. So I think the Greenway should be colored green, 100% protected bikeway should be colored green. We don't have any in Albany, and so I think that no city street should be colored green just by your own definition, and so I'd like to see that changed. My concern part of that is that you, people see a green street and they say, oh, our job here is done. But clearly, that's not the case. I think also that the whole thing should be future-focused, and this, maybe this is already included in all these things, but as far as bicycles are important, of course, I think bikes will be around for another 100 years, but, you know, when the last one of these was put together, did battery-powered scooters exist, you know? And so I think the thing should think about that kind of micro-mobility and just make sure it's covered in everything that's said and done, and that speeds are incorporated and all those kind of things, that the thought is put towards various micro-mobility solutions that might exist, that exist today and might exist in the future, and just make sure all that's, all our bases are covered there, if they're not already. I do also value the connections to other cities and other regions, and want to make sure that the ATP does incorporate a lot of that. And being on Adams Street, near the northern end of Adams Street, the item that's on this agenda later tonight, on the bridge across the creek there, I think is really important connection. Things like that really make, can make the plans within Albany successful that aren't successful now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Julie Winklestein, please go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a few questions. First of all, I wanted to, well, make some suggestions and then questions. My suggestion is to come up with a term besides pedestrian. I tried to find, looked online, and I, it looks like maybe Pete, that you've heard this before. And I looked online to try to find a better term, and I know that Councilmember Jordan has talked about, about not using that term, but I would encourage you to try to find something, or maybe invent something, and, you know, start a trend, because it obviously is not an inclusive term. And the point that the previous speaker made about people not knowing about the meetings, some people can't attend but some people not knowing, that's, that's true. Overall, everything in Albany, it, there are so many people who don't know about a lot of the meetings, and there needs to be a better way of getting information out. And I know that's not up to you, it's up to the city, but I just want to mention that I've seen that over and over again. I wanted to comment on the length of the walk signals, that the walk signals, even the one with the Hawk signal is so short, and I've timed the walk signals in the city of Albany, and they're too short. Unless you can walk really fast, you're not going to get across before it changes to red. So I'd like, I wish somebody would look at that and, and think about how, yeah, that it, the walk signal should go automatically to walk and that they should be longer. Let's see, I have notes here, I'm trying to think of, think of walk signal. I was curious about any of the incidents of cars and bikes interacting, you know, having there be an accident, if there's any statistics about, about whose fault that was, because I know that, living in Albany, I know that the bicyclists do not stop at stop signs, for example, and I don't know if they stop at red lights, but I just wonder, it seems like that there needs to be, people need to be obeying the law or change the law. And my, finally, there are just a few things about the presentation that I, I think you could use some suggestions for different wording, in terms of excessive, being more inclusive in your language. And so if there's an email, I would be happy to send you the suggestions, and I have a link to a great graphic, I'm an article about using the Equity, you know, that Equity cartoon thing that you're obviously using, it was in one of your graphics. I have a suggestion for how you could improve that. So if there's a way I could get that email address, I'd be happy to send you that information. Thank you.
Next, Bryce Nesbit, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Bryce Nesbit, and I live just on the Berkeley side of the Albany border, but do most of my shopping in Albany. I'm also a rock climber, and in rock climbing, when a route is labeled, it's labeled with the hardest move. So if it's a 5'9" climb, that means that the hardest move is 5'9". So you have a bunch of segments with colors, but those don't represent routes. Perhaps you could reimagine those into routes and then label them by their hardest crossing. So Bicycle Boulevard grid, whatever it is, tell me what the worst spot on that is, and then maybe the average as well. So my comment in terms of the development of the plan is, something has changed since the last time, which is the rise of e-bikes, which are heavier and faster than the previous bicycles that, that they're replacing or, or living alongside of. And the side street bicycle network, the Bicycle Boulevard network, is a great place for many riders to take an e-bike. They can go as fast as they need at the speed limit of the e-bike without endangering or making uncomfortable other road users. And so I encourage you to create sort of an e-bike, or heavier bike, or roadway cycle network akin to the Bicycle Boulevard network in Berkeley as part of this active transportation plan. I also live on a street with a half-divertor, and the neighbors, while the creation of diverters has always been controversial, including in Berkeley, the preservation of them is not. The neighbors would be up in arms if that were ever removed. And I encourage you to consider that. As hard as it may be to get a measure in order to reduce the traffic on a side street, once it's in, the neighbors are really going to like and appreciate that, and not just the ones that cycle or walk. Thank you for the time to address your body. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, Ian MacLeod, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening again. I just want to address quite a few points. Plan goals for one. I think something blatantly missing is climate action goals and coordinating with our climate action and adaptation plan. Over 40% of our greenhouse gases are produced by transportation. So one of the goals here, key goals, is to reduce our dependency on car travel and vehicle travel and provide alternatives so people can use non-polluting transportation methods. And to do this, I think what we need to do is create a complete and connected cycle network throughout the city, along all our major streets, and to all our schools, and with connections to our adjacent city. If we want mode shift, the only way to do it is to create protected cycling infrastructure. That's the only way you get it, that's what's been done around the world, in cities all over, and with a lot of success. Really, just pussyfooting around and saying, oh, we might not want to do that because we're afraid of this or that, you know? I think we just have to be bold. This is what the key to our city being livable and more sustainable and greener is going to take, so I don't think we should shy away from it. You know, it's super important. That's one goal that's missing. Another goal is that in the city, we created the zoning infrastructure, zoning ordinances to allow for much greater housing development along San Pablo Avenue, and we're going to be upgrading our zoning on other streets, Solano Avenue, for example, also. Supporting transit-oriented development is super important. We don't want to create new housing without a great cycling network right outside the front doors of all these new housing projects. Otherwise, we're going to create a more car-dependent city. These people and these new residences are going to be car-dependent, and it's going to make everything worse. So it's really, really important to provide complete cycle networks to give people an alternative to car use and car parking. I just can't stress how important that is. Otherwise, we're going to keep a congested city, a more polluted city, a more dangerous city. So really important. I do have issues with the LTS map, I think it's flawed. I don't think it should be used as a basis of design. I think the, the idea of pathways is a really good, so many bike networks fail because there are bottlenecks, or pinch points, or dangerous points on them. So a continue, I mean, we have to design a continuous network. That means San Pablo Avenue, Solano Avenue, and Marin Avenue as basis of our complete network with protected cycle tracks. The only high comfort facilities really are protected cycle tracks or separated bikeways. Other streets are not comfortable or safe for users of all ages and abilities. That's true in complete streets design. NACTO guidelines are similar. If you look at Marin Avenue, NACTO requires, because of the volume and the speeds, separated cycle tracks. NACTO should govern what happens on the, not this level of stress map, which I think is flawed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I've not seen any more hands raised online. If anyone else would like to address the commission, please use the raise your hand function.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I was having trouble connecting with Zoom, I'm not sure what the problem was. I'm particularly interested in Adams and Canes in Adams. I was, like the young lady, surprised that, that Canes was a little greener than we were. It was a more comfortable street, because I've heard a lot of complaints about Canes. But I was also surprised that Adams Street, when I say we, Adams Street is no more or less comfortable than, than Madison and Jackson. So despite the fact that we did treatment, we haven't gotten any change, apparently in the comfort level, whatever that means. Probably my overall biggest concern and disappointment is that the, there's no, as far as I can tell, that there's no discussion in the ATP of any data collection. Before we decide, we need to make every north-south street high comfort level, we have to find out how we're using it now. ATP planning has, or this is redundant, but the proposals for ATPs in Albany has always been a data-free zone. I mean, we don't look at any data, we just, we're aspirational, if they build it, maybe they will come, with some evidence they aren't coming. The gentleman who purports to be an expert suggested that Albany was the only city doing, I believe he said, two-way bicycle traffic on a one-way street. First, that's incorrect, that we're currently not doing that. Right now, the current plan, and is still in place, is, is within block two-way traffic for bicyclists and, and cars. That was determined to be a flop, and, and so the council approved a new contra-fog bike lane, but we were told, at least by the staff, that contra-fog bike lanes exist in other places in the United States, including a couple of streets in Chicago. I guess the final point is, when I look at the ATP, there's pictures, pictures, you know, worth a thousand words, but there's a lot of pictures in there. I noticed that Canes and Adams now have a dashed line, and it wasn't clear what changes we were going to, were going to be needed. Apparently, it's difficult to see the colors. Apparently, they're going to go from bike lanes, bikeways, which was approved by the city council, to bike boulevards, which could mean something else, but it wasn't clear. I mean, I suspect we're not going to see a serrated dash lines anywhere on our street, so it'd be, I was curious to know what that, what that meant.
Thank you.
We do have one more person online that would like to address the commission.
Okay, yeah, that's one more, and then, because it's kind of late.
Will Hale, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I really appreciate this work, but also I want to make sure we're not just focused on bikes at the expense of pedestrians and those that need to drive. An example is, I don't think it would be good to put a bike path down the median of Key Route Boulevard. That's a great place for pedestrians, laying in the grass, playing with your dog, walking through the grass, and, you know, taking something away for, to really focus on bikes wouldn't work well there. Similarly, although I've done a lot of cycling in the past, I recently had back surgery. I can't cycle now, so I'm reliant on driving. And I do drive an electric car, and I charge it with solar panels, so it's not an environmental issue necessarily. But we do want to make sure there's parking available. And somewhere like Solano Avenue, where it's a great place for businesses, people come from outside the area, we don't want to limit that to only people who can cycle there. So I think I like keeping Solano more pedestrian-friendly, and there's a lot of other areas that people could put a protected bike lane than Solano. We want to be able to keep people accessing Solano. Some of those people will need to drive. And another point is, I have a special needs daughter. I think we need to keep in mind, there's a lot of people that use areas like the schools, like the high school, for example, that if we put a protected bike lane in between the curb and where cars would park, so the cars are sort of parked in the middle of the lane, if I drop my daughter off there, she's going to get hit by a bike, crossing that bike lane, because she's, you know, has special needs and isn't as good about crossing places as some others. Whereas, we do need to keep in mind, there's a lot of reasons to be able to pull to a curb to drop somebody off. So my main point is, let's also keep in mind, driving is necessary for some, and walking should be a priority also, not just cycling. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay. Okay. Discussion.
There was one question in the public comments about the meaning of dashed lines. Maybe we could just clear that up. I think it may be on page 32 of the PDF.
My understanding of it was things that were yet to be done, that were in the original plan, the 2012 ATP, and had not been completely done.
That's correct.
So in the legend, it talks about existing network and proposed network?
Yeah, I can put it on the screen right here.
Yeah, the proposed network, excuse me, is what is envisioned in the currently adopted active transportation plan, which is dated 2012, but was most recently amended in 2019. And so what we wanted to do, again, kind of as a starting point, was to compare the level of comfort that we see out there today, based on the data, but also user experience, like we noted, and then to kind of overlay that onto the facility types that were proposed in the 2018. And so I think if you, I guess there's two maps that use dashed lines. So this first one shows the proposed bike network and the level of comfort, and whether the bike facility that is envisioned has been constructed or not. So the dashed lines, like those red dashed lines, show that there is a bikeway proposed on that facility, but that it still is low comfort. The solid line means that there is an existing bikeway on that facility and the comfort level. And then this second map, again, shows the 2012. This is more like the status of what's out there. The solid lines show parts of the 2012 network that have been constructed to the standards that were specified in the 2012 network. The dashed lines are things that were envisioned in the 2012 network that have not yet been constructed. So I hope that makes it clearer.
Chair, it's 9:30. I'd like to propose, I'd like to move that we extend the meeting to 10:15?
Second.
10:15. I think you can just do something like this by acclamation.
Okay, yeah.
You necessarily need a role model for.
All right, let's go.
So you would generally say, all in favor, all opposed?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Any comment for staff?
I do think as we look to refine the level of traffic comfort maps, that it's understandable that any, you know, street with driveways is going to impact on the comfort for all ages and abilities. I think definitely accounting for driveway density may be an additional factor if we want something quantifiable. I know that the whole thing is based on comfort and experience of people using it, and then we're sort of backing those other factors into say, you know, how much traffic occurs on streets that people report feeling comfortable on. So there's definitely an art component to it as well. I recognize that. I think that there is value in showing where people feel more comfortable biking and walking and so forth. I do think as we start to flesh out the documentation on this, perhaps in the policy section, some discussion about micromobility devices and electric motorcycles need to be acknowledged. And I will differentiate between electric bikes and electric motorcycles, because it's just a speed and power thing, and not something exceptionally new. We've heard comments about this before, so I just want to make sure that it's addressed somewhere in there. And I don't know that we necessarily are going to immediately solve those things, but just putting that on the list of things that need to be considered. And then, as we're updating the LTC maps, it's great, we've got all the segments with colored lines. I think it would make sense to use dots for the intersections, because we may have, you know, wonderful green line, and then red dots, yellow dots, orange dots here and there. Clearly, crossing San Pablo is not a green dot anywhere that we've got right now, because we have no bike-only, pedestrian-only phases there. If we did, I'd say maybe that does get to green. But as we're looking at a network-based approach, we need to look at the nodes as well as the links. It's just going to better represent, I think, what we all experience. So I'd love to see that added. That's it for my comments.
If I may, just add to that, I think, actually, I agree with our consultant, Matthew. I mean, it will be really hard to measure very subjective feeling. You know, I think Marin Avenue is great sometimes. Other people might not agree with me because of the speed. So I think it will go into rabbit hole and waste all our project time into have a perfect map showing that everyone likes. But I think, I would suggest relying on quantitative data. I think right now, you guys have traffic volume, speed. That's really good. And then the first commenter, when she says she's, that she and the other neighbors that feel comfortable because there's a lack of stop sign, I think that's a very legitimate element to add to that. And so maybe next time when you introduce this map to everyone, tell them, you know, this is not based on this, this, and that. Everything is very quantifiable, everyone is, everything is very objective, you know, it doesn't reflect people's subjective feeling. I think that will be helpful. The other thing is, when we're doing planning, for example, we have a bus stop, we have a bar station, then we'll have different buffer, 400 meters for a bus, or 800 meter for major transit station. Maybe when you are planning for the routes, we can add a buffer, say like 100 feet, 200 feet, and see around those lines, routes, so at least people can see, okay, which part of the city is actually not covered by any types of bike routes. So that might be another layer of information for people to see the lack of service.
Okay. Few comments. I want to second what Fareed said about the evolution of EVs. I think it used to be a situation where people walked, bicycles, motorcycles, cars. Very discreet points along a continuous. That's all going to get blown up. It's getting blown up now with, and you see this more on UC Berkeley campus, where all these goofy little skateboard-like EV devices that people are using. There's one guy, dresses up like Darth Vader, and he's got that big delivery thing on his back, and he goes up and down Solano Avenue. And of course, there's getting to be a fine line between electric bikes and electric motorcycles.
Or between shoes and a vehicle.
Yeah, well, you know, shoes that kids have with little rollers on them.
No, I'm just saying, it's almost like it's shoes to, anyway, sorry to interrupt.
But this is coming for cars as well. You're starting to see more of these sort of glorified golf cart vehicles around town, and how you design this system to sort of handle all this fusion of vehicles going forward is something we have to think about. All right, I'm going to say this, it's not very politically correct, but I commuted via bicycle for 11, 12 years when I was working on campus. And my preferred route by far was the Melvia Bike Street. It's, it just really worked. It wasn't crowded, there was space. And once in a blue moon, I would have bumped into a friend who was commuting back to Albany along that bike path that more or less winds under art tracks. And I stopped doing it because I thought that was far more dangerous than being on a relatively open road like Melvia, because bike paths and separated bike paths are safe only to the point of crowding. And if there's also moms with strollers and dogs on those expandable leashes, you know, it's really dangerous. And I just stopped using them when they're crowded. Granted, if you go six miles an hour on your bicycle, it's a little better, but please just keep in mind that crowding, whether it's on a street or a bike path, is a problem. But also urge us to be careful about experimentation, because it's good to experiment, but if the experiment doesn't work out, you really have to have a mechanism for undoing the experiment. A good example is this central bike path that San Francisco did down, I think it was Mission Street?
Valencia.
Valencia, yeah.
What's that?
Valencia Street.
It was Valencia. Any case, it was very controversial, and they're basically undoing it because it was too problematic. So it's nice to, and then we do that with certain kinds of street treatments or traffic calming or whatnot, where we can do things that are temporary. We can, you do a lot of stuff with paint to see if that works out first. And so that's something I think we should keep in mind. I have the privilege of spending a couple, about a week in Stockholm this summer, and there's bicycles everywhere, and there are very few protected bike paths. And the things, the way they route bicycles and pedestrians together is, to me, it was like crazy, but it works. So you don't have to necessarily, you can have a high volume of cycling in an urban area, and you don't necessarily have to have protected bike paths. There were some protected bike paths, but that was on like the major thoroughfares. And finally, I think, and this is beyond the scope of this effort, but education is still really a big part of transportation safety. Not only education for pedestrians and cyclists and motorists, and ways to educate them about how to, you know, share transportation infrastructure in a way that makes it safer. And I'm not quite sure how to do that, or how to integrate that into a plan like this, but I'm skeptical that you, Gandhi had this famous saying, I think, that he scoffed at people who said you could design a society that was so perfect that people didn't have to be good. And I think that applies to transportation, too. You can't design a transportation network that's so good that people don't have to be skillful and thoughtful in how they use bikes and cars and their feet. So that's my shtick.
May I? May I go ahead? Interesting final statement, Michael. If I can respond to that, I would say, I'm not looking to form a perfect network for anything, but I do want to form one in which people have time to correct errors. You know? You still have to be present, you still have to not be in your phone, but there's time to recover. We all get distracted, we all make odd choices in the moment, but as long as there's time to recover. I really was somewhat inspired by one of our first speakers, remote speakers, and our last remote speakers. And I think this idea of grouping people is both helpful and unhelpful. We're all pedestrians in some form in our lives. Almost everybody in their life is a pedestrian, but really what we're talking about with pedestrians is we're talking about kind of continuum from walking to crawling in some form or assisted movement. And so maybe instead of pedestrian, we call them walkers to crawlers, and that shortens to WTC-ers or waters? I don't know. I'm working on it. I'll get back to you. But.
Don't quit your day job.
Oh. What day job? Right, but it really is important that we're talking about ways to work out interactions between all the roadway users. And that's what I come to this with. And I want to thank the team for the presentation and the effort behind it. I like Fareed's nodes and links idea, because it really brings in what we were looking at before. He left. Because, Clay, we were looking at data. We spent a lot of time looking at the local road safety data, and I know that the commission has this in mind, I know the consultants and staff have this in mind, it's part of what's going on. This is not a data-free zone, period. And being more explicit about nodes and links, I think, would bring some of that forward, because we do know where there are actual reported conflicts. And the heat map helps us see where there are perceived conflicts in addition to that, which is something we were not really able to get to very well in the local road safety plan. At the same time, I will say, it's interesting to me that there's very little reported input along Pierce Street, which seems wrong to me, right? And I would encourage other commissioners to take a look at the map and see what's missing. We have a lot of people who live on Pierce Street. We have some plans that we're developing to support them in active transportation. So I feel like we're addressing that, but we're also missing something here. And I hope that what we're doing is going to meet what isn't, the need that isn't appearing on this map. I would love to get into an offline conversation about the bicycle level of comfort. I appreciate the work that's gone into that, and I'm still puzzled by some of the anomalies that I see. For example, Brighton, who in their right mind would take their kids on a bike down Brighton at this point? And the first turnoff northward from Brighton at Evelyn, that's a very heavily traveled street, and it's tracking in this map, in the bicycle level comfort map, the same as a parallel street to the west that isn't even a through street. So, and I can't use that street, but why are they the same color if they, yeah, you know? So I think there's more that could be done there. I realize there's a potential rabbit hole, and this perception angle is, can be dangerous in terms of. dangerous in terms of how you set it, how you talk about it, how you agree on it. I get that. At the same time, we're talking, as Matthew mentioned, about some treatments to our city streets that are aggressive and politically challenging. And if, if I as an advocate go to city council and say, we absolutely need this here, and they look back in the plan and see that it's a green street that I'm proposing an aggressive treatment to, I'm going to have trouble supporting that need. Would love to talk about it some more. We're not going to get there tonight. I would love to see all ages and abilities bolded in your goal. I would love to see more information about how our streets like, Matthew mentioned Curtis Street, which I think connects to El Cerrito Bike Boulevard. But so far, we haven't seen those cross-jurisdictional connections. I'd love to see more of that. I would love to see us at least mention our climate goals. With the rate of change in our city, we're not going to meet the Paris goals by our active transportation plan, but it is part of our response and part of our goal. So, thank you.
Couple of follow-ups. I will echo the suggestion to mention the climate goals. I think there's an important tie-in there. Regarding the level of comfort, I mean, there's any number, we could spend a whole meeting just going over the individual blocks of which should be what and which should be what. But I think there's a fundamental question that we can resolve tonight that kind of affects the whole map of the whole city, which is, some people are advocating that we reserve the green color for just protected facilities, that there's no such thing, in Albany at least, as a residential street with, with car traffic that is also comfortable, high comfort, and usable by people of all ages.
There's a cul-de-sac off of Francis.
Yeah. Tevlin, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Well, I can't, I can't, I'd have to recuse myself if I was going to talk about-
Not go there then.
But I think we need to decide, I would like for us to decide as a commission tonight, is the distinction between green and yellow on the local streets something that's useful in this map? Because I think the people who are saying, we don't think any local street should be colored green, basically what they're saying is all the local streets should be yellow, and this, this level of kind of nuance that the map shows now with some being green and some being yellow is just obfuscation, and it's not, it's not actually conveying any useful information. And I, I don't really know what my opinion on that is, I just think it's a, it's a fundamental difference of perspective on what, what this, what this color coding is for and what it should mean. So I would like for us to engage with that. Do people think that that distinction between green and yellow on the local streets is useful? Or would it be more useful to just say all the local streets are yellow and only the off-street paths are green?
I think that if there is, you know, a technical standard for what those colors mean that's applicable across many different towns and cities, which is what I think I heard from the consultants, I think we should probably just stick with whatever that procedure is. Because, you know, there's a lot of standardization that we don't think about, and standardization is good, you know, we have the same system of measurements that other cities have. We use gallons, we use inches, we use centimeters or whatever, but I think if this is something that is reasonably concrete to measure, we ought to use the same measurements that everybody else is using. Otherwise, I don't see the point.
I think it's mostly just a start, it sounds like it's mostly just a starting point.
I just want to add to that. I agree. I mean, if everyone else is using it, I mean, the citizen of Albany, the resident of Albany has high standards, doesn't mean that we shouldn't use green on our street. It's a sign of achievement of people here, right? We have some green.
Well, but I mean, if you look at the number, if you look at the derivation, it's just traffic flow and-
Right. What I'm saying is let's not abandon that, let's add to it, that's all the comments amount to, right?
I, I'll attempt to be brief because we're just getting late. I would only like answer some of this with an anecdote. I spent a lot of time walking up and down Talbot Street between 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning. And I would, and it is green for the three blocks leading up to Solano. That's the stretch that I walk, I walk my kids to school every day. I would urge the consultants to go to some of these green streets and see how much users of all ages and abilities are actually using them. Because, you know, the, one, maybe two children use that street by themselves. It is, the vast majority of cyclists are parents riding e-bikes with several small children. And, you know, like the occasional adult commuter on Talbot. So I think that it's important to get a feel for like, is this comfortable enough to draw people to it? And I would suggest in a lot of cases, the answer is no.
So we had a question, I think, in that discussion about what is standard? I think we're mostly encountering this diagram for the first time, or this format. So to the consultants, is this a standard illustration that is, is graded in the same way in common active transportation plans or planning processes?
I can answer that a little bit, and thanks, everybody, for sticking with us on this. The, there is an accepted metric called level of traffic stress, and you can Google it, look it up, and it's been widely used. The problem with that metric is it only includes two factors, and it's the traffic speed and the number of vehicle lanes is what that's based on. And it was made about 15 or 20 years ago, and the intent was to keep it very simple. So if we were to kind of use the widely accepted standard, that would be good, but we recognize that's an incomplete standard, and it doesn't consider a lot of other factors like the ones that we've discussed in this, in this meeting. So again, we were kind of trying to kind of achieve a balance here between using an accepted standard, but then being able to apply judgment in people's lived experience to that. So I think someone mentioned, you know, we're kind of using it as a starting point. I think what I'm, what I'm clearly hearing is that, you know, we took steps to kind of take that metric, and every move we made, like Matthew said, was a downgrade. Every comment we heard of, what about the school zones, what about this? We didn't upgrade anything to a higher level of comfort. Everything was a downgrade to a lower one. And it sounds like there's still a lot of skepticism about things that are rated as high comfort, and that, I mean, what I'm hearing very clearly is that we need to be a lot more judicious about the assignment of high comfort ratings. Whether or not, you know, it meets the definition of high comfort by that kind of older accepted metric, or whether we add lots of different factors to it, I think we just want to make sure that if something has a green rating, that it is truly green, and it sounds like a lot of these things aren't. And I really love the comment that we heard to kind of maybe try to evaluate the intersections separately, because you can have a really good facility, and then as soon as you hit the intersection, if it's really hard to get across, you know, where a high comfort facility crosses a low comfort facility, that's a low comfort intersection generally. So I hope that that helps a little bit. Again, the issue that we're dealing with is that the kind of accepted standard is incomplete and doesn't really tell the whole story. So we're, we're trying to kind of refine it in a way that reflects people's lived experience, but that, again, that makes it a little more subjective.
Yeah, the initial methodology is 15 years old, but every year at the Transportation Research Board Conference, there is another evolution of LTS, and it gets better and better and better. And so while the initial LTS only had a couple of factors, there are, it is a much more robust science now. But even if you don't sort of believe that science, there are also sort of lookup tables in the NACTO guides. Somebody mentioned we should be using NACTO, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. It's sort of an alternative to the national equivalent, what is it? ASHTO, American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, who had written the book on how we're supposed to design facilities, and NACTO is supposed to be sort of this city perspective on how to do that. Regardless of whether you agree with LTS, NACTO has a series of lookup charts that say, at this volume and this speed, this is the type of bikeway that is appropriate, and the recommendations that we're making here comply with NACTO. But I do totally agree and appreciate the comment, like, if we're just saying that all residential streets that are shared use should not be designated as green, then let's have that conversation, because I think that's what I'm hearing as well, is sort of a fundamental disagreement that any child will ever ride in a residential street without accompaniment. So that's just, I think that might, we should have that conversation.
Thanks, Matthew.
Thank you. I think we should continue that conversation at a future time. I don't think we can address that tonight. And there's a lot of common ground, but I don't think we have a clear path forward tonight.
And not to launch us into another conversation, but I just wanted to acknowledge that there has not been a lot of conversation around goals here tonight, so I just wanted to point that out.
We do have a goal of finishing by 10.
We have some written comments from strollers and rollers about one of the goals, but I noticed that the comments are not about the goal per se, but rather about the bullet points below the goal. So I wonder if you could clarify what you mean by potential objectives and policy areas? Are those like ideas that may or may not make it into the ATP, or are they?
Yeah, I can, I can comment on that. That was kind of meant to be a preview for how we're going to use the goals, and, I mean, this is something that's in the current adopted ATP, and is kind of a pretty common thing in a lot of planning documents. We set the goals, the goals are very high level and don't get into the nitty-gritty details, and then each goal is supported by, sometimes they're called policies, sometimes they're called implementation measures, objectives, there's kind of various planning terms you can use, but the idea is it kind of describes more of the how, and it gives more of the specifics of the, you know, how will we develop an active transportation network that provides access and the right connections to places where people want to go? And so those things at the bottom of the slide there were kind of a lot of common things that we tend to see, and like the types of things that will go under those goals to support them, but it wasn't intended to be a comprehensive list, it's kind of a sample of the types of things that would support the goals. Later deliverable in, in the project, we actually have a draft of it now, but we want to make sure that it's fully done and, you know, fully reviewed, but a goal of, sorry, a deliverable of the project is a policy matrix where we have each goal, and then below each goal, there's a whole list of all those policies, itemized one by one with columns that kind of link it to the other various goals and plans in the city. So links to the transportation element, the climate action plan, the Alameda CTC plan, and things like that. So ultimately, we would like to develop those bullets into a more formal list of policies that support the how on each goal. Does that help to clarify?
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, for instance, the, the written comment from strollers and rollers took issue with the second bullet point in goal one about context-sensitive design. And we could get into a whole conversation here tonight about what that means and whether we support it, but I wonder if that's premature, and if, if that's really just sort of an example of the kind of thing that may or may not end up being included in the goal, then we could have that same conversation later instead of having to resolve that tonight, so.
Yeah, the short answer is we're not there yet, and we, we would like this commission's input on those top-line goals, those top sentences on each slide, those four statements of, of goals. And that other part is kind of where we're going next, and we want to develop that more as well. But the main task, test tonight is to really, you know, get any comments or changes on those top-line goals. I think the main thing that I heard from a few commissioners in the public is we want to make sure that we mention climate goals in there. That could be, you know, a set of policies and objectives under the goals. We could just create a fifth goal and note that, you know, one goal of the active transportation plan is to uphold the plans that are in the city's climate action plan, including all those targets and the mode shift goals and things like that. I mean, that, that could be its own standalone goal number five. I guess in terms of the comments that I've heard so far, I think that's really the only major substantive comment on those, those top-line statements for the goals, is maybe we create a fifth one relating to climate. Otherwise, I think, any other things that I've heard, I think, are, again, addressed at those kind of lower level, not at the top-line goals we're trying to address tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Would it be possible to show all four of the proposed goals on the screen?
Right now, they're split across four different slides.
If you can show a sorting view with those four pages.
Let's see. There's got to be a way to do that.
Well, slide 14 hints at it, but it doesn't have the, it doesn't have the full sentence, it just has the title of each goal, not the, not the-
That could be enough.
So page 14 of the PDF, right before the-
If I can share my screen, I think I have them on a spreadsheet here, I'm not sure if that would, that would help.
That'd be great.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can do that.
Yeah, page 14 is reasonable.
And I think at a high level, I, I support all the goals that are presented. I'm happy to mostly leave it at that with the one addition that under goal two, safety and comfort, we talk about reducing the number of injuries and fatalities. I'm kind of a fan of the vision zero approach, just saying we want to eliminate them. I know it's aspirational, but we need to shoot for that if we're going to close the gap. And I feel that everything, all the input we're hearing is in that direction, so I think that will better represent what our goal really is.
But that reduce the number of injuries is, is one of the bullet points-
I know, I know.
-the level of detail that we may not need to get at.
I don't want to go into that little detail on everything, that's just one that stands out to me as, you know, comes up often, and it should be familiar for most of us.
So for this grid here, does anyone want to add or change anything?
Can I comment on that?
Of course.
I think at this level, my takeaway is that they're going to work on, you know, this goal, or we create a vision, and then they will be supporting policy or objective in order to reach those goals. At this level, we're only talking about the goals, very high level. This is really a proper amount of them, you know, not, for me, to be honest, to be put at climate on it, it's overstepping on other agencies' job, you know, because doing this itself is serving the climate purpose, you know, how deep do you want to go, you know? Once you set up a goal over there, and then when you're trying to come up supporting policy to support the climate, then you're basically competing your, your work with other agencies. So I think here, I didn't see any red flags, and it covers all the grounds, so to me, that's really good goals there.
I guess what, maybe the disconnect between this and the climate goals is the question of mode share, and this is all about building the facilities. There isn't a goal here that says people will use the facilities once we build them. And we're sort of-
We're, we're building enough facilities to reach a certain level of use.
To reach a certain level of comfort, whether we can, as, as the Transportation Commission, whether we can say it's our goal that people will actually use this once we build it, maybe that is outside of our-
That's assumption, that you assume we'll be able to quantitatively measure how much facility is related to how, a change of mode split. facility is related to how, a change of mode split, right? Unless that's true, I don't know, that's the question.
Honestly, I think that's in goal one. By an active transportation network that encourages people of all ages and abilities to walk, bike and roll.
Yeah.
We're saying we, that basically says we want mode shift. We can, you know, flesh that out in the sub bullets of it. Or if you want to add some specific wording in there that more emphasizes it, otherwise I think it's there.
We've had quite a bit of discussion between city staff and the consultant team on this as well. There, I don't think there's a right answer. It's a subjective matter. I guess from my perspective, you know, certainly the best thing that the active transportation network can do to achieve climate goals is to provide the best possible network, including high, high comfort and all of the connections and crossings that you need. So not just a green segment, but crossing all of the, all the crossings you have to do. So, you know, the ATP can't ensure that people use it, but what it can ensure is that people have viable options to take their trips more than just getting in a car. So providing the best possible network through these four goals, I think will lead to the mode shift or that, that is how, that's within the purview of the active transportation plan is to provide those options that hopefully will lead to the mode shift. But, you know, again, if we want to explicitly name climate in here, that's something we could do as well. We've had really good conversations on kind of both ends of that.
I think that that's fine and I, I will kind of add that, you know, we can go into a lot of depth on different things, but maybe our, our climate goals are a motivation. They're, they're not a measurable goal of this plan. They, they are hopefully an outcome of it, just as, you know, improving public health is a desired outcome of it. I, I think if we, you know, have a paragraph somewhere that talks about motivations and acknowledges those things, that'd be good enough for me. I, I agree. I, I think the goals as they are are pretty good and I kind of don't want to water them down more.
I agree with that approach and I think we can, you know, leave something for the city council to do, right? We don't have to completely resolve.
That's dangerous, yeah. In the interest of time.
Maybe when we take this to council, that's just something we can discuss and we can talk about the goals and just kind of head it off right at the pass and say, hey, we had a really good discussion with the commission and with the public about climate and about public health. I think that's a really good parallel that, you know, public health outcomes are, are part of what we want to achieve with this as well, but that those things are more kind of like targets or indicators or, or, you know, ways that the active transportation network can support those bigger goals. So maybe we can just discuss it a little bit right at council and then kind of tee it up for them.
Sounds good.
That, that sounds fine and I, I like the idea of it being a motivation rather than a goal and, and not the only motivation. So in the interest of time, I'm going to make a motion or propose a motion. I propose that we support the four goals as laid out by the consultants and that we, with the understanding that climate change is a motivation and that we move to further offline discussion of, of the bicycle level of comfort and possible node and links duration of, of mapping.
Second that.
I just wanted to observe that the recommendation is not for a motion for this item, so I'm not sure, I mean, I think the comments we've provided fulfill the, the agenda, but if we'd like to have a motion too, I don't object.
Motion is not necessary, but it.
I don't need it to be in action.
All right.
Do you still?
I think I prefer a motion. Started it already.
Missed last words.
I had a second.
All right.
It reinforces the comments, but.
Roll call, Mr. Mattel? Or Mr. Bond, one of the two?
Oh, yeah. Do we have a, we had a second already? Okay. All in, do we have to do a roll call? Okay. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chomsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Javendel?
Yes.
Commissioner McCroskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Pang?
Yes.
Chair V. Hill McLennahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's a little stronger going to city council with a unanimous motion.
Before we move on to five, three, or we should probably discuss whether we can actually reasonably do five, three, but my question, my first question was, is this, is five, three a time sensitive issue, seeing as it is a grant? Should we, should we push through?
It is a time sensitive issue. I can truncate the presentation to your liking, but yeah.
All right, how, how long do you think you will need for the presentation?
You can probably get it done in five.
Okay, so should we extend to ten thirty?
Yes.
I move that we extend the meeting to ten thirty. Michael seconds and we're showing by hand.
All right.
Okay.
It's by acclamation. All right, five, three, let's do it.
Okay, my technology works.
It's going to take till ten thirty for the server to load the presentation.
I think I got it. This is a discussion item or an item for a, a grant that staff is considering applying for. It's the Adams-Carlson Connection Project. And just a little bit of a background to give commission context about the project and the grant that we're applying for, I will launch into it. And I should probably go to full screen. So this is the general proposed project area. The planning study area is shown in that small box, kind of to the south of the half mile station walk shed around BART. So it is within the El Cerrito Plaza BART walk shed and, you know, various other relevant contacts to the project. It's in the active transportation plan and from El Cerrito in 2016, of course Albany's 2012 active transportation plan and the Alameda CTC San Pablo Avenue Parallel Bike Project. It's relevant to that plan as well. It is the number six priority project in the 2012 active transportation plan. It's the one project in the active transportation plan that isn't really progressing right now, with the exception of the Canes-Adams, you know, bike way. So this is the, this segment of the project crossing Cerrito Creek. So we're looking at, sorry, in terms of development and there's three, you know, there, in the Metropolitan Transportation Commission Plan Bay Area 2050, it's in a PDA, our priority development area. City of Albany obviously is looking to develop around San Pablo. And so this is a project that's relevant to that. And then the San Pablo Avenue specific plan in El Cerrito has similar density allowances. There's also a transit oriented development site being developed on El Cerrito Plaza, the BART station there, which is going to see 743 new units in the coming years and the reduction of a whole lot of parking. So transportation is going to become a big issue. There, it is the neighborhood just north of the creek in El Cerrito is an equity priority community. Outside, there's a lot of, a lot of barriers in this area, particularly for bicycles and pedestrians in the north, south direction. So this map, you can kind of see a lot of the barriers. We've got the El Cerrito Plaza Shopping Center, which is a barrier, even though there are, the streets do connect, you kind of are cut off at El Cerrito Plaza. San Pablo is obviously a barrier for bicycles and pedestrians going north, south. The Orientation Center for the Blind Campus is a barrier on Adams Street and then it's not shown here, but Albany Hill Park is obviously another major barrier for folks traveling north and south. There's also a PG&E high pressure gas transmission line that needs to be considered when developing any plans for a north, south bicycle and pedestrian path. So just, we want to be cognizant of that, but this is really the path, the path that's being proposed to, to be studied is kind of along the San Pablo Avenue corridor or around the San Pablo Avenue corridor, getting bicycles and pedestrians north to south there. So there's the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program. The deadline is in late January and city staff saw an opportunity here because it aligns, the grant program aligns with the project's goals. And I can talk about those in one second. There's also, you know, this is a long line, we have applied for five grants in the past seven months if we include this one, if we move forward with this one, the Pierce-Cleveland Bike Way Connection Project, we just got approved through the city council to apply for another MTC grant, for the Climate Program Implementation Grant at the city council meeting earlier this week. But the, this will be the fifth grant that we're applying to, so we're writing a lot of grants these days. And the recommendation is that city council authorize, the commission recommend that city council authorize, the city manager to submit a application for the project. So I can speak more about the project, the grant goals, but I think I'll leave it at that. City staff saw an opportunity here. We've spoken to Caltrans. We think it's a very competitive project and this is one of our top priority projects in the previous active transportation plan that we haven't made much movement on and this seems to align with the grant goals and priorities. So that is why we are seeking your recommendation.
Can you show us the, the planned study area again? Was there one a little closer in?
There is, right here.
What?
The one right here.
These are concepts, but they don't have a dotted line around the, there was one, yeah, well, that's, I guess that's it. So it looks like it includes San Pablo?
It does not. It's, sorry, great, I have a slide just for that question.
Great.
So what we're considering applying for is an alternatives analysis. I would consider three corridors. This is all being, this is all in development, but the idea is to look at three corridors and consider which alternative makes the most sense for a north, south bicycle pedestrian connection. And yes, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Well, yeah, I say go for it.
We're, we're still doing questions, right? I think we're going to have some public comment.
Just a couple of people online.
Yeah, we, are there any?
Matthew wants to.
Are there any more questions from the commission? Okay, let's go to, to public comment.
Chair, how much time do you want to provide for public comment?
I think we probably need to truncate it a bit, just, I don't know, minute and a half, two minutes? Would that be reasonable?
Go with two minutes.
Okay, great.
Okay, first Bryce Nesbit, please go ahead.
Oh, this is Bryce Nesbit. So this is a project that's been around the block many, many times. And there's a big elephant in the room and so I would like to ask if, a question, which is what engagement has been done with the Orientation Center for the Blind? Are they on board to this and what can you say about that important topic? That's my question and my comment, both. Thanks.
Let's go through the other one and then we'll address the questions.
Brian Martin, please, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. As a resident of the 600 block of Adams, just about a half a block or so south of there, I'm really looking forward to this. I encourage the commission to approve the exploration. I also thank Commissioner, well, Ken for asking, Commissioner McCroskey for asking about what's the scope of this and just to find out, I mean, this is the question that people, a lot of us debate is, well, which of these things would be better? And I think actually spending some time and effort on figuring that out is, exploring the options is perfect and well warranted. And I know what I would prefer, but I, seems like that's not what, and that would be a bridge across the creek at Adams, but I think, yeah, spending the time and money to, and somebody else's money to actually, you know, research this is excellent. Thank you.
We're all taxpayers, it's our money.
Yes, okay.
All right, are there, do we have any more hands?
No other hands are raised this time. I can respond to the question regarding our engagement. We have engaged, it was several years ago, engaged with the Orientation Center specifically about this project and I think it's fair to say they have significant concerns about it. They have people, I'll be trying to be real quick here, they have people who are learning to, to navigate the streets, they're, they're newly blind and they're uncomfortable with a lot of cross traffic for their, their resident, their temporary residents. So there would be a lot of complexity to a design that would avoid bicycle, newly blind person pedestrian conflict. And I'd also point out that the parking lot in front of the Orientation Center is state property, so we would have to get their full cooperation. It's not a city street right in front of their, in front of their building.
And I would just add to that, that this grant is, part of the grant is a lot of outreach and engagement, so it's around 50% is what it's asking for, for outreach engagement and Orientation Center for the Blind is, you know, a major stakeholder in this, so that would be part of the process and, and what we would be applying for funding for is to engage with them.
How much partnership with the adjacent cities? I, I think some of this is in El Cerrito adjacent, some is Richmond adjacent?
So we're actually applying for the grant, if we're approved for it, with the city of El Cerrito. So it would be a joint partnership and we would match funds ostensibly 50/50.
Oh, great. There's no Richmond, okay, sorry. I move the staff recommendation.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I mean, the way you've put this to us, the. I mean, the way you've put this to us, there's a lot of incentive for us to say yes, apply for the grant. Is there any downside to saying, to us recommending that you apply for the grant?
Staff time, priorities of the commission.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
So, brief question or comment? So you have some sense of the probability of success of getting this grant? So you think, what do you think?
It's a less competitive grant compared to, you know, ATP and other such grants. It's also moving the project forward, not to construction, obviously. So that, you know, this is still, even despite all the processes that has gone on so far, it's still in a more process-oriented phase. But we think it gets us closer to the outcome of getting some sort of north-south facility in the area to the question of whether we have a good shot. We think we do. We have, we think we just have a good shot based on the history of, you know, how many people have received this grant compared to those who have applied. And we also have a team applying for it.
Okay, so I just have a few things to say. Well, first of all, there already is a TOD. Just, you know. Seeing things to keep in mind that are pragmatic, building that bridge is going to be really expensive. And that may or may not be a stumbling block going forward. I have always heard that, I, you know, I thought the Orientation Center would have objections to the crappy sidewalks we have historically had in Albany. But what I had heard from people is that it's sort of not a bug, but a feature for them because they're folks who are learning to use canes, need to be able to negotiate crappy sidewalks. So they came to the right place. But our sidewalks are getting better. Whether or not that applies to bicycles and e-bikes, bigger, heavier, faster, zooming through there is another matter. And Jeff, I think, expressed what the obvious concerns would be. But there's a second level of concern is that you're dealing with a state bureaucracy. So even if you got the local folks to sign off on this, there's somebody up in Sacramento that you have to figure out who they are and what they need. And that adds another layer of complexity. Those agencies up there are not super competent and efficient in my home. So that's all I have to say.
I think that would be a part of the analysis that we'd be conducting, is that consideration.
I just want to comment, I appreciate this coming to us. And I know, Jeff, you remember all the agencies we had to deal with on the Buchanan Bike Path. I get that this has state agencies, that one had state and federal. And I have confidence in staff that we can address those issues, and we're having help.
Here, here. All right, it sounds like we have a motion. Do we have any more comments or questions?
Can we vote?
Yeah. Well...
Sorry. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chomsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Javindal?
Aye.
Commissioner McCroskey?
Aye.
Commissioner Pang?
Yes.
Sheriff V. Hill McLennahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Rush through the last few things.
Thirty seconds.
Announcements, I have one that you will soon be getting, maybe even tomorrow, an email from the city clerk regarding the reappointment process. Just a friendly reminder, at the end of every council term, every commissioner and committee member needs to reapply. We hope that you do. And for members of the public that might be interested in serving on any vacancies, they too can go to the city clerk's webpage, the city's webpage, and under Government, there's the list of commissions, and there's a particular link to application process. And I'd say this is about to be posted in the next day or two.
Additional announcements, there were two transportation-related items that went to city council earlier this week. One I mentioned was another grant application for the Pierce-Cleveland Bike Way Project that staff is applying for an MTC grant for. The other was the BART presentation on the regional benefits of BART service. Also, just a quick update on streetlight maintenance. The first round of streetlight replacements using Albany's new streetlighting guidelines is underway. Alameda County Public Works, who maintain Albany's streetlight network, will replace more than 70 failed and failing streetlights throughout the city over the next three weeks.
All right. Do we have any requests for future agenda? Other than that?
I understand, I understand that staff is going to come back in January with something on speed limit, speed indication signs. We've been talking offline. Thank you, staff.
Anyone else? All right, next meeting is January 23rd. I will see those of you who are reappointed, I suppose, if I am. And I suppose we adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.